Six, 2023 Planning Board is in session. May we have a roll call? Please, Madam Secretary.
Chair Lefaro.
Present.
Vice Chair Finity is absent. The Secretary is here. Board Member Catalinato.
Present.
Board Member Mutu.
Present.
Board Member Neely.
Present.
Board Member Thom.
Present.
We have a call, Madam Chair.
Great. Can you please join for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any minutes?
Yes, we do. We have lots of minutes.
Lots of minutes.
She's bringing copies of them.
Hang on. September 8th to September 22nd, October 13th and October 27th.
Motion to approve them?
Approve.
Approved motion by George.
Second.
Second by Craig. All in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Those four are approved. Oh, and so we need to officially appoint Secretary to the Board. That is our function. And I would nominate Gloria again, and I think she's agreed to do it again, right? So do I have her support? Second by George?
All in favor?
All in favor? There you go. Gloria, Secretary again. Do a great job. Okay, so Janice, NRP number one on the work session.
Thank you.
We got, is she back?
Does anyone need a printed copy?
Yeah, I think.
She brought printed copies as well, so.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
You do front and back.
Thank you. Sure. And I also key, if you don't mind, just grabbing one and passing it down.
Yes, ma'am.
Just so you see the, I took out one of the aerials with the buildings on it, just in case you wanted to look at it. So we don't have Mike at the switch over there today. So we went over, we actually, Mike took the time to re-watch the work session.
Oh, good.
And took the comments down, and then I refined them. And then, as you know, Craig had zoomed in at the time. He said he had some statistics.
Yeah.
He emailed them, and I added them in. So the whole first page is just, you know, the project description. Then it gets into your comments. We tried to, they're not necessarily in order that you set them, but we tried to make sort of macro down to make some sense out of it. So, you know, I don't know if you want me to go by them one by one, or you want to comment on any of them.
The flow of it, I, when I read it, I thought, gee, we should move out with that.
Okay.
And certainly the statistical stuff, like, maybe we need to number these things as well.
Would you prefer numbers to bullets? I could do that.
Yeah, only because it's easier to say, well, what about point one? So one would be.
One would be the first bullet.
The first planning board.
And then it's like sort of 1A, B, C, right?
That's all design, walkability. But the statistic, given the population of Quayog, now we have more.
Okay. Killed a lot of trees. Some for everybody.
Janice, so the population, now that probably could hook in with the statistics that Craig just gave you, right?
Eight. So it's really eight. And eight and eight A, you're saying?
Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Actually.
Eight, nine, ten. I'm numbering all the bullets, right?
Yep.
Twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. Fifteen major bullets. You have some subbullets underneath it.
Okay.
So I also think that the segmentation is something to move up.
That's almost like the first thing.
Yeah.
Fifteen, you said, right?
Which is, well, number six, to avoid segmentation.
Yes.
Okay? I think that really should move up.
Okay. So do you want to start with like the macro situation, which is density?
I think so.
And then just move down to, I'm sorry?
I think so.
Okay.
Janice, I think that, the segmentation, then the issue of the population, the separate class points.
But the actual verbiage, all of this, is okay. It captures your comments.
You captured it, yeah.
Great. So that's the first thing. And now, we, you know, we can, I don't want to waste your time. I could try to do it myself, but if you just want to quickly tell me, like, you know, sort of two, I thought, came over before six, because you're talking about, you know, the design.
Mm-hmm.
And rights, and three is about right sizing. So maybe three is really two, because it's about right sizing of proposed development. Then you get into the actual design stuff.
Right sizing, yeah.
Yeah. So, and then more specifically, the community garden playground comments.
Exactly.
I see. So I would say three becomes one, right? Which is, given the lack of walkability, public transportation, as well as number blah, 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 right sizing.
Mm-hmm.
That's the first comment. Does that make sense? And then the second comment, I would say, is probably number four. Population reduction in density comment. This is still sort of along the same lines as this right sizing thing. There was many redundant comments. We tried to.
Yeah. No, but I think you've come from all, right?
Yeah.
Now, on that one, Janice, not to disagree with the recommendation here about proposing a reduced project. One of the points made was that they had not heard from the fire department. So they were, I think, were going to get back to us on that. So I don't know how that impacts this. And then the other comment was that, like, fire, ambulance, police, all have different sectors, and it should be kind of proportional to looking at those various sectors, as opposed to just the Hamlet of Quayog. But again, that's not to disagree with the recommendation of the Board, if everybody else is comfortable that that was kind of the net result.
Well, it could be included, added. Could it not?
Sure. I can add it to number four. We'll go back and re-review what you said about that, but it sounds like you're saying, are you talking about the proportionality among the town comment, or just in Quayog, that you think that those facilities are lack, or are not able to serve this area, this proposed development? That's.
Right. When we talked about the population of Quayog, and then we were talking about, you know, the emergency services capacity. They're each slightly different jurisdictions, so I think it was, you can't compare them all to just the size of the Hamlet. Some of them cover broader areas. That was, again, just a comment that I think was made. And as I said, I think the outstanding one that I noticed was that they'd not heard from the fire department.
Okay.
So I don't want to speak for the fire department, but I think we should just make a note that a response from the fire department is needed, was needed.
Okay. So it should get and incorporate into FEIS.
So then we have a whole hunk on traffic, right?
Yeah. As an aside, by the way, which is like kind of left field for, if you can indulge me for one second, I thought of your issues with the SEACRA process.
Yes.
And, you know, there's something that you may want, this is, you know, you're not the lead agency, whatever. This isn't about this, but generally, the FEIS is the lead agency's document. So you prepare or cause to prepare it, and the applicant typically prepares it. But, you know, there's nothing stopping you as a lead agency from getting a separate consultant to, because it becomes the lead agency's document. So just keep that in mind, that you don't have to do it the way we've been doing it. It is something that could be.
With the town board, you mean?
No, this is a town board action, and they're going with this way. But when you are the lead agency.
Considering our action.
Considering your issue. When you're a lead agency, and you have a DEIS in front of you, the project sponsor completes a DEIS, the FEIS is the lead agency's document. You prepare or cause to prepare. The cause to prepare has been construed to mean that the applicant prepares it, but it doesn't have to be that way.
We can do it.
You could hire a consultant to prepare the FEIS, to respond to comments in a way that you feel acceptable. So just offering that as a potential piece of advice.
No, the applicant doesn't pay for it. You don't repay for both. They don't pay for both. There's a review and/or prepare. They can't, they don't do both.
Well, I'll check about that, but just so you know, there's that option, maybe.
That's good.
So then, on the new action, we are the lead agency or the deciding agency?
No, no, no. Nothing to do with this. Like a whole, like, hypothesis, separate process.
If there's a project where we are leading.
Right. When the site plan comes in. No, not this at all.
When a site plan comes in.
Say it's a site plan or like a 50-lot subdivision. You're the lead agency, and it's a type-one action, and you've paused decked it. You get a DEIS from the project sponsor. The FEIS is your document.
It's our document.
And therefore, you can rewrite it, you can have a separate consultant write it for you, or you can have the project sponsor write it. I mean, I've spent like 15 years rewriting FEISs on behalf of the town, the projects, you know,
Right.
the lead agency. So it becomes your document. So just keep that in mind.
Okay, that's good to know.
That's all I'm saying. I was, you know, when I was thinking about it, I'm like, you know, I don't, we don't do it that way, but
But we have the opportunity.
In the law, it says you can't.
Right.
I'm just going back to, you sent us. And there's a whole paragraph about the density and percentages based on census data.
Yeah, I'm not seeing that in here.
It's not in here.
And the Rutgers study was another thing that, a recommendation of the town.
Yeah, it's so funny, because I was looking, I asked Mike to print this out for me, and I don't see it on here.
Is he here?
No, it's not here.
No, but is he here? Mike?
Christine, the ones you printed, did they have it on that one? The one I sent you?
Yes.
They are, they're different. The one that Jackie gave me probably does, but the one you gave out is different than what Jackie has.
Yeah.
Maybe Mike got a previous version that wasn't print, that didn't say.
I don't know, but take a look at this. This is printed.
The ones that Christine printed are the right ones.
And I printed that out from the.
Yeah. I don't know what happened. I just sent it to Mike before he came up here.
That's why I went back.
It looked different there.
I was just looking at it also, like, where is all that? It should typically, it should be.
One more.
It should be four pages.
You have it, Janice?
So just, Janice, so we're clear, too. You made number three, number one, number four, number two. Are you, did you change yet, one and previously one and two?
Let's look at the one again. It's in green.
Okay, let's start all, or page one. Given the lack of walkability is number one right now. Two, three, then we have A, B, C, D, four. Any indents or As?
You're talking to yourself.
Talking to myself?
Well, no, but I'm saying, you said you wanted to start at one, but now you're number.
We're just rememoring right now. But I'm saying where it's indented bullets, those, consider those A, B, C, D as part of the.
We now have 17.
So one, two, nine, ten. Do you have one more copy of it? The whole one I'm talking about?
You know what would be helpful, too? Just to like, since you're categorizing these, to have like a bold heading, like, say, number 17 is traffic dot, you know, these are the comments kind of thing? Because then we can review it like a staff report.
Seventeen main bullets and several with some subs, A, B, C's.
Right.
So one is given the, and what did we say we were going to swap that out with?
I thought we were going to take number, starting with like the big macro comments, which is sort of number five.
According to the 2010 census?
Yeah.
Yes.
Sort of a density comment.
So we'll make that number one.
So five.
Becomes one. And then under that is, should we put the school stuff?
Yes, 10 becomes number two. 10 and 11.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. So two and three, right?
Yes.
Two and three. 10 becomes two, 11 becomes three.
Yep. So then, so you've got census, which is your macro comment.
Mm-hmm.
School, which is your next two comments. Then I think the services one might be.
We're talking about right sizing?
Yeah. What was that?
It's actually number one now.
It's number three, oh, yeah. Number, oh.
Will become number one.
Number one becomes number four.
Yeah, okay.
Well, we also have a couple, Mike, we also have a couple macro comments on 14 and 15 about Allen Singhausen Girardetown. Should that move up four and five instead, or?
Yeah.
15 and 16. Ah, sorry, 14 and 15.
So maybe that's five and six.
Four and five.
Is number one four still, or not?
I don't know.
Number one is four, so this has got to be five and six.
Okay.
So 14 is five.
And 15 is six.
Okay. Following it.
And then we can get into the right sizing and the.
And where do we put segmentation?
I think as part of the subdivision thing.
Okay.
So the next one could be.
So number two is a subdivision comment. I can add that under number three and envelop it as a sub-comment, because it's a subdivision comment.
The site layout.
Yeah, PRD open space area.
You want to put that under three?
Falls under the subdivision comment. So two could be the comma E, or, you know.
So you're saying number three could become seven?
Yes.
And two goes to seven E, or seven?
Or maybe A. I think it would be A.
Okay.
Because that's.
Two becomes seven A, and then.
Okay, so there is no more two, so now there's only 16 overall comments, right? Because it's sub. Okay, good. Then seven should be the next one. I mean, number seven, which would be eight, right? That's your segmentation comment. And not, eight should be nine, because it's following through, I'm still talking about that site plan. Then maybe four should become 10, or maybe.
Four could become.
Four becomes eight.
Become eight.
Yeah. Four becomes eight.
Eight.
Seven becomes nine, and eight becomes 10.
It's like, let me know when you're done.
So I want, whoever's following this right now, I hope you work.
I'm with you, yeah.
Do we have to approve this right today?
If you can.
Can you redo it?
I can.
Yeah, just move it around and.
I think, I agree with you, Jackie. Then if we have to refer to a number and a letter in the future, it's fine. And then condensing the comments into categories that are bolded out under those numbers, and then it'll be very easy. But I think they, so all the information's captured, it just has to get organized.
Okay, I can organize it, Claire. If you can.
But the language is.
You can adopt it, but you know that all the substantive comments are there, aren't they?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Mike, then watch this again.
Yeah. Mike will watch it again.
I dare him to try and do it.
So we're throwing away this other thing.
Yeah. The other one is wrong.
I'm sorry, it's incorrect.
I don't know what happened.
All right.
If he messes this up. Okay. So not voting.
Don't you do it. Don't do, don't let Mike do this.
No, I will, I'll do it.
You do, because you understand it. So shall we vote on it?
Yes. The substantive comments, just the order.
Yes, the voting to approve the NRP referral to the town board. Motion by George, second by Gloria, and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, six in favor, one absent. Thank you, Janice.
That's right.
Yes. Thank you.
Yeah, just juggles upset. Thank you, Janice. You shepherd it, please.
Thanks.
Okay, so one is done. The group representing the old country roads, Spian Riverhead Road, that was initiated from this board. I think Claire is doing that.
Yeah. John, is Claire out there? Can you sneak she's out?
Yeah. Claire? Oh, you're not Claire.
Okay. Okay, she's back.
No? Thank you. Okay, 9/11 is off the agenda. We're waiting for the traffic report. And we need planners.
Oh, and three and four duplicated, there's two? Oh, maybe not.
No, but you know, three is really two, and four is number.
How many fingers have I put out?
We actually have, this is the agenda now?
These two are off. They're duplicated, and they're off.
So we did the referral.
So we have three and four duplicated.
It's the same.
It's the same.
They're not duplicated, but they're different parts.
But they're both off.
Yes.
So we're waiting for the.
We're waiting for bodies.
There's Claire. Claire, the resolution, Old Country Roads, Spian Riverhead Road?
Oh, no, I don't know Anthony's true password.
And I think coastal vision is also off, number six.
Coastal vision is on, yes. No, no.
No, it's, I don't think it is.
No, it's not off, I think.
Coastal vision is off.
No, it's not off.
Anthony just told me it was off.
He's presenting.
He just told me it was, he was, didn't know, but he got confirmation, it's on the agenda.
It is on coastal.
Coastal.
Okay.
So my next one would be number two, and this was a little while ago. We were looking at a bunch of site plans along Spian Riverhead Road, and the board, Craig first, but the board agreed that maybe there should be, like, some kind of study along Spian Riverhead Road. I did intend to put an aerial, but I can get the GIS up. So we can take a look at this. So we've had a number of site plans, I'll just put the aerial on, too, along this area, Spian Riverhead Road. And probably, I started putting it at resolution together, but we can talk about the language. But probably, this has also gotten some feedback because of, you know, this is a bypass now. People are coming directly from West Hampton or using this instead of going to East Quag, because it backs up in East Quag now, too, so. So the way I wrote it, and you can help me with the language, is to recommendation from the planning board because of the added site plans that occurred on this road, to study this intersection. Maybe it's, maybe appropriate to have a stop sign going along Old Country Road. But I'm not quite sure if you want to do any specific instructions, or just ask them if they want to just study the intersection.
I think the, you know, from my perspective, and, you know, having been involved in many of these over the years, I think, you know, what you're probably looking at is the safety of the intersection. That's generally the driver for any intersection review, is safety. And, you know, adequate capacity.
Okay.
And the other comment, and I can't read what you have up on the screen there, but I think, as I think we talked about at one of the meetings, this is a county road intersecting a town road. Now, isn't Spian Riverhead Road?
I don't think it is, but let me just put the legend on, because it should.
Tom, can you, can you explain what you mean by capacity? Because whenever we hear a traffic engineer talk to us, they say it's not going to add traffic.
Right, right. And I, I mean, I think you're really, you're focusing on safety of an intersection is number one. And I think you're right. You know, level of service is really what you're talking about.
Okay.
You know, is it backing up a lot? Again, this is, you know, what we see the traffic engineers always present.
Okay.
You know, how much is it backing up? Because like this study, or anything you do, is, you know, what are you going to do with the information? You know, what's the results? Always nice to know things, but what are you going to do with it? So if it is a county road, and I could be wrong about that.
It isn't.
I thought it was. One county, one town. I'm forgetting which one's which.
There's two jurisdictions then.
I don't see that, it would be yellow if it was a county road.
Oh, yeah?
So it's both, you know, and if it was county, it would actually have the CR number right next to it.
What I was going to say is, if it was an intersection of a county and a town, generally, the county would take the lead on it. So I would have said, ask the county to do it, and if the county, you know, won't do it, then. The town do it. If it's a town on town road, then obviously it falls on our, you know, depart, our engineering or municipal works, traffic safety office to probably hire a consultant to look at it.
So maybe safety and level of service. Because I think that I, we've seen where they say it's a D, it's a level service D, which basically means you're just in traffic, I think.
Right. What's acceptable in a report and what's acceptable when you're sitting there are two different things.
Yes.
But generally, the intersection review deals with, you know, as I said, safety.
Is it called intersection review, too? Is that a term?
I think that's really what we're talking about, is the review of the intersection. Craig, you brought this up originally.
I guess, would, you know, sightlines be considered part of a review of an intersection? I would imagine it would, right?
Sure.
Right. Those are the things you look to see, do you need to change them, or can you change them?
Yeah, it's most certainly a sightline issue, and everybody cheats to make their turn. So everybody's creeping up, creeping up, creeping up, and into the intersection. And that's where you lose your sightlines, and that's where the danger comes from.
Right. So it's, you know, I mean, they would look at, you know, number of accidents and the type of accidents.
The number of accident reports, yeah.
That's generally what you'd look at. You'd look at the lines of sight. I don't know, we have, you know, the wait times, the level of service.
Is there any stops on there at all, no?
There's a stop sign.
From Old River Road onto Old Country.
That's correct, yeah.
Spian Riverhead Road.
Spian Riverhead.
Coming down to the, east-west, there's no trap, there's no stop sign. There is one at the intersection coming down. And, you know, don't want to get too far out, but generally, your primary road, you don't put stop signs on the primary road. You try to put these stop signs on the intersection road.
So the legislative intent for all of this primarily would be safety, right? I mean.
Right.
And to ensure a flow of traffic. I mean, because what we're never looking at in any of these is the consistent flow of traffic, because there is no flow of traffic anymore, right? It's like at a standstill.
Right.
I've never really seen this at a standstill, but it's definitely, it's definitely a lot of traffic on Old Country Road, and quite a bit coming off, so that, is that, is everybody kind of creeping out to try and, and sometimes making a turn while traffic's still coming, trying to gauge that? You know, is this sort of intersection where ideally a circle is probably the best thing to have, rather than a stop sign?
And the left, the left turn from Old Country onto Spian Riverhead, there's a turning lane there.
Is it, is a turning lane, yeah.
And people generally cheat that a little bit, which actually makes people going around them push out a little more. There are a number of, number of things, again, it's all sightline.
But it sounds mostly like safety.
But it sounds mostly like safety.
Oh, it's, yeah, it's absolutely safety.
Safety, sightline, accident.
So, yeah, I think, you know, number of intersections, line of sight, potential...
I mean, it's a rare day that it backs up there any more than like four or five cars, but...
Potential improvements. I mean, if you did see a lot of left-turning accidents, then you know you have a problem.
Yeah, I actually avoid making lefts out of there, because, again, it's around the curve, people come very fast around that curve, and, again, you're cheating the sightline, so now you're sticking out, and you have cars coming this way at a rapid rate of speed.
Well, if you can avoid a left turn, you're in.
At any time, yeah, I know.
So Claire, you're looking for, like, language, the intersection review, it sounds like is the term, and then things to look for within that would be the sightlines, the accident history, you know, load on the road, and, you know, just any improvement recommendations that could be made to improve safety, right?
Yeah.
So that's what we're asking the town board to seek?
Yep.
So they would do the study, Claire? It has to be initiated from the town, the town board?
Right, um, I know, I think the town, since a certain person left, town engineer is the head of, like, things like for traffic, so I will CC him on this, and obviously they're town roads, and so the highway department would be integral to that, too, so we'll copy them both on this, but it will be addressed to the town board, that's what I, that's what I envision.
Okay, is they, is there a traffic engineer being hired?
Um, I don't know.
It's in the budget.
Oh, it is.
I've been told, you know, like, I mean, there were two openings in the engineering, two openings for engineers in the engineering department right now, so...
We've been talking about it, Tom, for how many years?
Tom, Tom wasn't gray then.
Exactly, exactly. But, you know, you're right, it would go to the town engineer, he'd probably be the one to decide whether it could be done in-house. My opinion, an intersection like this might be a little too complex to be done in-house, no reflection on, on our town engineer, but, or whether, in fact, he would recommend to the town board that they hire an outside consultant to look at it. I think that would probably be his call.
Right, so I think we just, you're just asking for the study to happen.
Yeah.
For those various reasons and those ingredients.
Yeah, we're seeing a lot more activity with site plans, and that means more tre, more use, and...
That's very important.
Do you think it's, I mean, I've said that there's been a number of, uh, commercial site plans, I could even give a number within the last five years if you want.
Yeah, I think that's valuable, because that goes to the heart of why all of this is happening.
Okay.
Continuing, you know, background traffic growth.
Okay, oh, good, good.
Okay, Tom, that's the right words.
Do you like that wording better than, like, the increase of the commute, because that's, that's just a general, my idea, but maybe ju- continuing background growth is better than that?
Kind of one of the buzzwords, buzz phrases.
Okay, there you go.
Every road's becoming a back road now, if it goes more than, if it, it goes between two other roads.
Continuing background growth, right?
In traffic, traffic volume.
I like that, okay. I'm going to work on this for the next meeting, I just want to get the wording correctly, you know, I don't want to rush, you know, to get it together, but, um, if anybody thinks of anything in the meantime, just email me, okay?
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Do we want to do my items?
You are...
How are we doing? I don't have many.
You are number nine, John Rigler.
Number nine, Kai Rigler, yeah, you can do that. Um, Tim's here, Tim, you want to come up?
It's page twenty-two in the packet. You can come here, it's easier for the microphones, and if you have papers.
Tim, the first order of business, no more pen clicking, no more, it's so distracting.
I think it makes me do it, too.
I don't like it either.
Thank you.
Very sensitive. For the record, Timothy, as we're calling forty-one, meeting house lane, Southampton.
Can Claire just give us a, a little background review?
Yeah, I'll do a brief, but, uh, I'm going to have, I'll do the brief overview. So, in back in, um, I think it was March of last year, Jackie was the planner on this, the planning board adopted amendment to the covenant that allowed access to this parcel, can you see that? I don't know, let's see it a little bit. This parcel from this current common accessway, because the owner of this parcel also owned this, and then the rights to go over this common driveway, right, Tim?
Yes.
Um, in, in, rather than going over this convoluted, non-open road here, so that was the preference, and the planning board agreed at the end of the day, but one of the conditions of approval, and it's in the packet, the wording was...
Acknowledgement, permission, or signature?
Consent of two owners.
Number three.
And the two owners in question are the, the two owners on the, either side of the common driveway on the northern part. And then I'll let Tim pick up the story from here, if that's acceptable.
Okay, so after you approved that in March, I drew up easements for everybody to sign. On eighty-seven, which is to the west, the long one on the west, there are an extensive litigation, including fraudulent transfer, and I don't know what all the deal is with it, but obviously he can't sign anything that would be binding, so we went to the title company, and what we've done now, the other lot on the easterly, northeasterly lot, they don't have any title to this road. They just have an easement to come around so they can access their property.
Wait, no, I'm confused about that. So the upper right, where there's a house, they access their property how?
On the left. Let's say a place that everybody knows, I think, on that show.
They do have an easement, but they don't own, what Tim's saying, they own the lands where on, where the easement is occurring. They don't own the land, so, they just have an easement over someone, actually, Tim's applicant's property.
The property. So, this is the property I'm talking about, they don't have any title to this road, and this lot that's in litigation has a short piece here. So, we wanted to sell this lot. I came to you back, we had a public hearing in January, in March you approved the resolution, that resolution included adding these people to the easement. I tried to do that, I drew all the easements, I sent them to them. As obviously, because of the title work, we determined that he can't give us anything binding, so we moved all of the easement area onto my client's properties. The title company accepted that, and the easement was filed, so I'm here to just to ask that we not have to include these two lots.
So, Tim, where does ninety-five take the access from right now?
It comes down here, but it only has an easement, he's got a driveway that comes in here.
Okay.
Actually, he could access off the cul-de-sac, but this is the way they do it. And he has a small easement that comes to his driveway.
Because the aerial almost shows like a, you know, like a dirt, a dirt road towards that property to the rear, on ninety-five, right, the aerial...
Like a dirt road on the east side, you mean?
Yeah.
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 But it's to, uh, to serve this person here, I believe.
Oh, that's a, that's a separate lot?
Yeah.
So there are four lots in this?
There's a driveway coming down to the top lot here, but not, not to this lot.
Four lots for, yes, for this.
It's a four lot, four lot subdivision.
It was a four lot subdivision, you, a declaration was approved. That declaration allows you to change it without a public hearing, but we did have a public hearing. It's the standard language, a majority plus one, but sometimes when you do these driveways like that, you'll say that it can't be used for any other property, that declaration does not include that language. So when I was here in October, I explained everything to you, the board said they didn't have a problem with it, but you wanted council's input.
Basically, that condition, number three, was based on the circumstance of the easement being involving those two other properties, right?
Yes.
And now that's not the case, because it's all on the other property, so we're just eliminating that condition three, because the intention of it no longer exists.
Exactly.
Right? Okay, got it.
So, do they, the easements have to be rewritten, Christine?
I don't think they, no, I think the condition has to be changed. They filed the easement without that, it didn't talk about that.
I'm sorry?
The easement itself didn't have the language in there that you're looking to change, it's the condition it did.
No, the easement did not. Okay, this was just an easement for one oh six.
So the action we're looking at, I just removed that, that condition from the approval.
Yes, that's what I'm asking for, so that we can, you know, continue to use this, and not have to open over a thousand feet of land in here, with all kinds of turns and whatever. This is, still their legal access, they, they have it out there.
He filed the easements and he gave them through planning, and it came to me that before, I reviewed them before they were recorded.
You did, so you've reviewed them, Christine, and you're okay with it?
I would assume that I reviewed them. I, I sat with him, and I went through this. I don't remember going through the easement with you.
We did not give you the easement before we recorded it, because we had to close on one oh six, and I got into all kinds of problems with these two owners, and we were closing.
So if there's a problem...
And, and, and the easement itself across the properties was already approved by the board.
So you should review that before we approve it.
If there's a problem, you can, you can, you guys can move on the condition, but if there's a problem with the easement, you're going to have to do, you're going to have to come back.
I would say that, I would say that, that I would not be comfortable without you looking at this first.
I looked at this whole thing, I just didn't see the easements.
Well, that's the key thing.
Because I didn't know they filed them without going through.
Without reviewing, yeah.
You saw the easement.
You just said I didn't.
Yeah, I think that's what you just said.
You gave, you gave it to Claire.
I said, if it came through planning and I approved it, then I okayed it for recording. If yours, but then, I don't remember this one specifically, if you say that, you, you said you recorded it without me seeing it, then I didn't see it.
But then I gave it to you afterwards.
I, I'd have to go back and look at it. I, I mean, I don't have a problem with what you're suggesting in terms of the condition, there's no legal issue there, and if the condition has nothing to do with the covenant, I don't have a problem with that either, but I got to see them.
Why don't we just make it subject to approval from the town attorney?
Okay.
That I would be comfortable with.
Right, I'm going to have to come back.
That makes sense.
If you can do that, that's fine by me, I mean, that's always a condition, anyway.
Could you just show on, on the screen, because I really can't see what Tim's doing there?
Uh-huh.
What exactly, what, what we were going to do, and now what, what?
So the original easement, and it may be, the original access was partially on other people's properties, so they have now removed it to be only on, and I can make this a finding, on the property that is controlled by the applicants.
Which is ninety-five, you referred to as ninety-five.
Yeah, ninety-five and eighty-seven, and then...
So eighty-seven is out.
Eighty-seven is out. Mark Klein owns eighty-nine, this, and he sold one oh six, but, and also, who knows, it's showing up there, there was, um, an illegal subdivision of this lot by Rigler.
Which one, ninety-five?
And that's where we get the ninety-three and ninety-one and ninety-three being one parcel. I, when Jackie Finland discovered that, she said, you have to rejoin this, I did that. So that's done. Now, it hasn't been re-done with a new tax map, because I didn't want to do that and complicate what I'm doing here, but as soon as this is all settled, then I'm going to do a confirmation deed and give it to the assessor, and he'll get a new tax map, showing it back the way it was originally done.
So put that in the conditions, too.
I'm sorry?
So, so put that in the conditions, too.
Well, it's done, I get it. I did it already.
But that just seems so, like, much more cleaner access and best to avoid those two northern lots altogether.
That's the whole purpose of it, not to open up that whole road on the, on the side. And this board agree, agreed to that, and that's how I acted, and...
So, yeah, so it's subject to...
So this driveway, then, that cuts across, um, lot ninety-one, nine eleven.
Yep, it comes down and comes across to the house on one oh six. Instead of them opening up all of this all the way up here, all the way down, that's, was the whole idea.
And, and your applicant owns that property where the road is going up?
Everything, yes.
So I think in theory, we, we agree, but we're not going to approve it until Christine, till council reviews it.
But can we, can you approve it subject to that?
It's entirely up to you. I, I've sat with Tim a number of times.
On this?
Yeah, so...
I'd be okay with doing it subject to, yeah, subject to Christine's approval of the, of the easement being on that, on that one property.
On the, the way it's drawn, yes. Just because, I have to tell you, to be forthright with the board, I have, my client has an escrow agreement, and I'm on a deadline on that escrow agreement, and there's a substantial amount of money that's going to be forfeited if I don't get something from the board.
Yeah, so you're, it, they're entertaining right now. Chairwoman has said that they would do it subject to ultimate approval of the document, so I just have to make sure I have everything. I need you to come in tomorrow if you want, Ben.
No problem. You have a copy, right, of the easement?
I don't know.
Okay, I'll give you another copy.
I don't know what I have.
I'll give you another copy and another map.
Yeah, I have to be able to...
You did submit a, a number of documents, so I did have to file on this.
All right, well, I don't, you don't need to look for it, I'll get some of this stuff.
Okay.
And the covenant, I need to see the covenant.
Now, what do you want me to do as far as the declaration goes?
Give it to Claire, and they'll send it to me to review the covenant.
The amended one?
Yes.
The amended covenant, right?
Okay.
Well, you're not amending a covenant, you're amending a condition, not amending...
Oh, the declaration, you want to see everything. Okay, I get, I, I will give you another package. Nope, I have no problem doing that.
Okay, so we're going to approve this pending approval from council, subject to, and I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Craig, second by George, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, six in favor, one absent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, um, my next item is, um...
Eight thirty, Country Road thirty-nine, formerly Bell Ringer.
Yeah, this is to set the maintenance bonds for the project. This is the former Bell Ringer, um, which is adjacent to, um, Speedway, and, actually, between the gas station and, um, the, the plaza with Hampton model and such. So they built the cross access in between, which is great.
Good, what did they do with the sign, anything?
Nothing, and it, there was, it was pretty silent on the sign, like, they're, they're leaving it at this time. It doesn't really make any sense, but it's not attractive, and it does lack side distances, but it was, uh, they were entitled to it, so they kept it, you know. I did take a special look at that when I was at the site, so...
I haven't been, I mean, I went there when this, the application was just starting, so...
But they're doing a good job to the building, it's all in order, and I'm recommending a maintenance bond?
Do we have any?
Yes, um, one-third the amount would be thirty-six hundred dollars.
Maintenance bond, right?
Yep.
Okay. Motion to approve that, maintenance bond by Gloria, and second by Kate, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, six in favor, one absent.
And then my next one is number fourteen, iconic beverage.
Oh, right, they want to add that shed in there, right?
They, it's actually, um, no, it's a, um, change of use in the back, and because it is a wholesale business use, it requires a special exception. And so there's no building going on here.
Oh, it's, so it's being, it's used now for bottle returns, and they want to change it to plywood?
Um, actually, it was a pool business.
Pool business.
So this is, if everybody knows, this is, um, iconic beverage in the front, with the wine store in the front, and the iconic beverage is the second use. The whole back was used for a pool company, um, and when you change to a wholesale business, they're going to plywood, let me just read this, um, plywood and molding business, you have to have a special exception approval and review from the planning board in order to change the CO. So, um, no construction, but we will be reviewing where they have the outdoor storage and the parking for the property, so there'll be this one step special exception review, and a public hearing is required. So we have all the basic information, I have floor plans for the plans, and the site plan with the parking, so I'm recommending scheduling a public hearing on this project.
Four?
I think I have it for February twenty-third. Let's just let me check our resolution here.
How many do we have? Because we were playing games last meeting with the February meeting. Jeff is shaking his head.
This would be the fifth. So it's up to you, do you think it's to four?
I don't know what the others are.
March ninth has one, and then three, totally.
So we can move this to March one, maybe?
Yeah, March ninth.
March ninth.
March ninth. Now, Claire, just repeat the reasoning for this, it's going from a retail use to a wholesale use.
It's going from a pool business to, which is special exception also, but a different use. So you, when you change the use, uh, the, when you choose, when the town board chose what would be special exception, they felt like a, a business which would have possibly cutting and things like that, would want the extra review from the planning board prior to an issuance of CO.
Oh, I'm thinking that the tra, the parking slash traffic might, as I'm anticipating big trucks as opposed to pool, a cool, pool truck.
Yeah.
Which is much smaller.
A hundred percent. We want to ask that question, and ask them, what do you anticipate, a truck smaller or bigger, or you'll want to ask that question?
I'm just thinking Riverhead lumber, those gigantic trucks with the spiders on the back.
Bringing plywood and wood and lumber.
Yeah.
Plus outdoor storage.
Yes, definitely.
And that, I mean, I don't know, but wholesale plywood molding, I'm sure that's a big business out here, but it's not becoming a home improvement center.
No, no.
They're not selling tools, they're not...
No, we're not retail, wholesale, definitely is going to be written right there, wholesale.
Which building is it, Claire? Is it the little one between the two?
It's the rear one.
Large one?
No, it's the rear one.
Rear and large one.
Yeah, it's the rear and large one. The little one in between is that ice, ice machine.
Right, so there are circulation constraints there.
Mm-hmm.
And parking.
Mm-hmm.
Right, I mean, they've got to get those substantive plywood sheets and...
Mm-hmm, yeah, so there'll be some review on this. Um, you know, you're not looking at the building itself or redoing the building, but there's so, a couple factors, and we'll go through the special exception standards, they help. and we'll go through the special exception standards, they help with the review.
Yeah, like is there really enough room to do this?
Yeah, that's a great question.
Yep.
Yeah, depends on the, the scope of the, the, you know, business.
Yep.
So that's why you ask how many employees you have, how many, where's your trucks going, how big are your trucks? And what's your circulation?
Mm-hmm.
That would be all valid questions.
That's all residential down to the south, right?
So this is, to the south is the, um, nursing center, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
All right, below that on your screen, are those individual?
And then these are, this is the residential to the south.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
And what's that tuckahoe that?
This is the proposed Liberty Garden.
Oh, that's a liberty, right.
That's liberty?
I was just gonna say this is, that's.
That's it.
Yeah, so the very little corner in here is, uh, the village, the tiniest corner of this piece of property. So we will do a referral.
That's the village line that runs.
Yeah, just to the corners there, so you can see that. That's the village line. Okay. So I'm recommending for the March ninth meeting.
Yep.
Anybody questions?
Okay, motion?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria, second by Craig, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, six in favor, one absent.
Thank you. And then my next one is Ocean View Park. Let's just talk about this last meeting, I'm sorry, the last meeting. And the board was comfortable with it, but exactly you weren't here, so do you want me to just explain it a little bit?
Please, is this an old file map?
It is an old file map. As I, let me bring up a plan I have for this. So we can discuss it intelligently. Actually, I even, start with the area.
Anthony, so Coastal is back on?
Yeah, he's, he's not gonna be here.
Okay.
So this is an old filed map, this is, um, I'll show you in a second. But this, these four lots recreated as development parcels. And the question that, um, Joe Gaza is asking or requesting is an amendment of the map so that this portion of the, of the map would not be an access road anymore. And let me show you the map, let some questions, so you can see what I'm talking about. So was it a map that was approved back in, um, nineteen eighty? And this, these are the two lots that had, would have access in between as proposed. Um, this is just the border of this development section. So everything south of it was proposed at the time to be sending parcels. And that is actually what happens, is turned out, most of these lots are controlled by, um, the town or county and their development rights have been, um, transferred off. So everything below this, this is obvi, this is actually owned by Mr. Gaza, the entire parcel. This portion of the lot will be developed, but everything else is owned, um, by the town or county except for this one little lot here, which I understand from, um, Dable Cox is having its development rights stripped off of it and it also will be donated to the town in the future, so I got an email to that effect.
That's the gentry property?
That's the gentry property, so that is the last piece. So it is, there's no anticipation that this will ever be used for access for development. It doesn't make any sense at this point, especially since everything else is open space.
Refresh memory that there, at this time, there's alternative access, right?
There is too, and so I wrote the resolution and I do have it, that there's two other ways. One is that we would leave this portion, if this was gonna be developed, of course, I've gotten information since, um, that this portion on the, adjacent to this parcel would not be abandoned unless you reviewed it and approved it, which we could probably even take that condition out at this point.
Right.
Or this, this would continue to have access and this is a long, um, the map doesn't show it, but the name is Broadway, Broadway. So this access will continue to access all parcels to the south, so.
And, and this is access sort of off of Watermill Town?
Um, it is access, yes it is, yep, exactly.
So why would Broadway continue to be open if those parcels that are sending parcels are not going to be?
Just access even from the town perspective, you know, if you wanna access the county and town land, which are open space, you can walk along those, those pathways.
It's not, it's not that it's gonna be open and developed, but it's just an access way if you need to.
It's just an access way.
And also serves as, as an access to Gentry's parcel should he not strip it?
Right, exactly. It's anticipated too, but, you know, obviously.
So Joe wants to develop that parcel and what about the parcel to the east of that? The large, the long parcel?
This, this long one, he owns, he owns this one. And this is, this is where he wants to, um, abandon it. So, um, I wrote the resolution that's, uh, it partially, uh, to permit the access road between the parcels to be partially abandoned, uh, adjacent to parcel seven.
Can you go back to the development map?
Sure.
Claire?
So it would be this access that would no longer be part of this development map.
Remember when we had the discussion, we were gonna allow him to develop, to abandon half of the road and leave the other half for access to Gentry's property down below, but now we're saying he can do the entire thing or?
Well, he doesn't control N, which, or eight, it's another property owner. But we could, we could eliminate this condition of eight's having to keep its half. Because A, we'd always have Broadway, which is an option. And B, um, as I said, this is town or county lands and there's other ways to get to that parcel.
And what is the value of abandoning that?
He gets that extra.
Square footage.
Pressure of development rights and square footage.
To put his together, the two hundred thousand at the end of the day.
Do you know the acreage of each parcel?
Um, these parcels, oh yeah, I can, I can look them up, generally speaking. The one that he controls here uh, is two point six acres. I'm sorry?
It's okay.
That was Charles.
That's two point six and the other one, which he doesn't control, Mitzi Kao owns it and that is approximately one acre.
The one with the red outline is his though, isn't it?
It isn't.
It is not.
It's, uh, it's, it's the adjacent property owner.
Do we need her, her approval to abandon?
You know, what you're doing is just amending the map to say this is no longer an access road. Cause this map, right, that you approved in nineteen eighty, which is a long time ago, forty-three years ago, um, thought that, that this access might be needed in the future. You didn't know how this map would further be developed.
So Broadway then is the access to her lot.
A Broadway could be, the, the access to her lot is along this road, which, oh man, what does that say? Terrace Avenue. So there is access to be built and that is actually a, um, a town, a common driveway agreement that's been approved by the town engineer and you. So there, her access to her parcel is through this Terrace Avenue. So she would not need this for access. And, and in all estimation, she'd abandon her half too. And if, if we can leave it an open issue or we can acknowledge that she can abandon her half too and then we would just do it administratively in the future.
Okay, that's better.
Seems good.
Yeah, I think so too.
So the action would be that we're allowing half of that road between seven and eight to be, to be abandoned ready to and incorporated into seven?
Mm-hmm, the action would be to modify the development section, um, to permit the access road between, to be partially abandoned. I could say fully abandoned, you know, by each parcel on either side.
And if you get seven and eight, get, each, can each get half of that road.
To the center line.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. I think it's fine. As the whole south is now preserved in the map.
Okay, so is it the town's responsibility to amend this map or does he amend it?
Your responsibility to amend the map. And it is just to, again, recognize that this is not an access and then they would be permitted to abandon.
And this protects every, all the sending parcels?
Mm-hmm.
Great.
Okay.
Okay.
Good. So the change would be to be fully abandoned and then condition number one would come off.
Just make it clear that it's going at half and half, not just to him.
So the language changes, where?
Mm-hmm. So, um, the be here resolved and I'll, I'll put the, uh, resolution up for you.
What page is it Claire, do you know?
Yes.
Page forty-four.
Forty-four.
In the packet.
So this is the background. Um, I can just say the third whereas, I'll say that there is an alternative access and I'll say it's a long, um, Broadway. So I'll take the reference to Ocean View Parkway off. Um, and I can also further say that it's the intention of that one parcel to be a development parcel. Do you want me to make a finding to that effect?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I can write this up for next time. Do you guys feel more comfortable with that?
Yeah.
I, I like that.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll get more time and then I'll make sure Joe is fine with the language too.
Read.
Good, thank you.
Great.
We'll do that. And then, do I have anything else?
Doesn't look like.
I think you're free.
Possinelli.
That is off the agenda. Um, we snuck two other signatures on, so. We acknowledge those now and then again.
So Possinelli is off.
Yes.
And we can acknowledge signatures for Campbell Ranch and for Firestar Holding. So those two signatures are acknowledged.
Yes, they've been signed.
They've been signed. Newly minted.
Re-minted.
Recast and re-minted. Okay, thank you Claire. And let's jump to Jeff, you wanna? Okay. So you're number five Jeff, the Christopher Mead?
Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, so Christopher Mead, I have revised draft, uh, list for that. We received comments from the Ag Advisory Committee, a little late, so I'll give you.
Can you speak up a little bit?
Yes, uh, we received, uh, Ag Advisory comments, uh, a little late, so they make the packet. So I'll give you the comments in the new draft resume. So the original application, uh, was for a wetlands construction permit to construct a three thousand one hundred and fifty-five square foot, um, agricultural storage barn.
Do we have a map up there?
Yes. So this was the original approved site plan for the storage barn. Uh, they've completely, fully built the storage barn with some modifications. Uh, so the applicant, um, made a request to the planning board for said modifications. Those modifications include.
Can you read that whereas the planning board received a request, cause that gives us some history.
Yes, I'll, I'll read it for you, I have a copy actually.
Oh, there's a few extra here Jeff.
And if you wanted to as well, you could jump to page two where the Ag Advisory Committee gave their comments. But, uh, yeah, whereas, uh, the construction permit, uh, an application for, uh, for Christopher Mead was conditionally approved by the planning board on July twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen. Uh, whereas the construction permit, wetlands permit, uh, proposed to construct an agricultural storage barn on a twelve point two one nine acre agricultural reserve parcel located within R eighty zoning district, uh, Ag Overly District, New York State Archaeological Sensitive Area in close proximity to town regulated wetlands situated on seventeen Mcox Bay Lane, the hamlet of Watermill.
It's, it's this where I said?
She wanted just the.
I just wanted the next one.
Oh, the next one, I'm sorry. Whereas the planning board received a request on November's tenth, twenty twenty-two to modify the approval to allow, uh, for the relocation of san, of the sanitary system, three hundred and forty-four feet from the delineated wetlands boundary line where two hundred and thirty feet, uh, was proposed. Um, the as-built location of the barn is currently at eighty-eight point three feet where ninety feet was proposed. Fifty percent of the parking lot to remain unimproved, uh, with the other half to be maintained as gravel. Installation of an irrigation well, uh, to the northeast of the agricultural barn. Installation of a paddock fence along the driveway. Uh, the as-built agricultural barn is located a hundred ninety-six feet, ninety-six point six feet from the delineated wetlands boundary where a hundred ninety-eight feet, uh, was, uh, proposed as shown on the site plan entitled map of part of agricultural reserve areas of the vision map of Wheaton Bay Estates for Christopher Mead prepared, uh, by squires and Holden.
So. So did, they get a, they go to the Z B A for these adjustments?
No, they did not go to the Z B A for these.
So they just built this?
Correct. So the, they had this original approval. Uh, when built, they noticed the changes in, uh, the distance from the property line and distance from wetlands. They also included the paddock fence off the entrance of the driveway.
So these all deviated from the approved site plan that we?
Correct.
And the Ag Advisory notes really indicate there's no agricultural use here and, uh.
Okay.
So I must remark.
Not problematic on an ag reserve.
They, they made the same statements on the original approval, so they are consistent on that front. Um, the applicant was going to attempt to send someone away.
Sure, I'm, I'm gonna be able to answer any questions you have. As Jeff indicated, these are changes that occurred and.
Wayne, just give us your name.
Sure.
For the record, Wayne Bruin, O'Shea Marsh Simpson and Bruin for the applicant. As Jeff indicated, um, when they did the as-built survey, they, they determined the, what we would consider very minor deviations. They, they all still complied with zoning. So eighty-eight point three versus ninety from just the one corner. Uh, the, the building being a hundred ninety-six point six rather than a hundred ninety-eight. As you know, the setback is a hundred and twenty-five feet from wetlands, jurisdiction is two hundred feet. So it, it's not an issue, but this is things they found after construction. With respect to, they prefer not to improve the entire parking area and they wanna leave half of it, uh, as dirt. That's what they had. They, they realized that they, um, they had an irrigation well in there and thought that they could get approval to use, uh, that well for their domestic purposes as they might need for the bathroom or otherwise in the barn, but the health department said, no, you have to extend the water line down the entire driveway, which they did. Um, and they did, um, based on some design issues, they did relocate the septic system, which was, um, you don't have the original, but it was to the, on that diagram, left of the barn and, and now it was located to more the top of the barn. Um, which is, you know, the condition make it better from, it's further away from the wetlands as, as well. For those reasons, um, so they finished it and they are working with the farmer to get things into production. They just finished the barn.
What agricultural use are they planning there?
They have a variety of things, fruit trees, which have been planted, um, and to my knowledge.
Mostly apple trees.
Right, and, and then other row crops have been, um, through the last few years. Um, I believe Harry, um, Ludlow has been the farmer on, on the property. So, so, you know, to that question, um, it has been undertaking, but it's been a slow progress and this is, again, this is four years ago when you approved the site plan and we're now here trying to get the certificate of compliance for, for the barn. But it was part of our office as well as the applicant realizing these minor changes were different and, and the fact that the two-year time period, we were, we had asked and applied for the extension, paid the fee and asking you. and asking you to approve the amended site plan accordingly.
Wayne, what is the response to the Ag Advisory's comment?
I just expressed that, is Harry Ludlow has been farming the property.
Harry Ludlow is farming his property?
Yes. There's fruit trees planted and there's been other row crops. It's not a hundred percent of the property, but it's been undertaken in slow, um, sections, so to speak, on the property.
Did the Ag Advisory know that, the time they made these comments?
I don't know what the Ag Advisory was given information on or not. I think probably all it said was the plans, so. But originally it was one of those, when, when the first application is the farming had not just taken place. If you recall, this was a property that was left open and fallow. And our client actually went in and removed all the successional growth that was taking place, large cedar trees. And to get this back into agricultural production, so there was some time that was needed to get that in place. We had to deal with neighbors, some of which wanted all the trees to remain and some didn't want farming in their backyard. Some wanted some screening. We also found some of their fences, you know, uh, encroaching on our property and, and them dumping debris on our property as well. So there was a, uh, an enormous effort on our client's part to get this to a point where they can get it in agricultural production. They engaged Harry Ludlow, who farms nearby as well, to farm this property and, and he's slowly getting that into production.
When did Harry Ludlow start farming?
Probably four years ago.
Four years ago?
Yeah, as soon as, you know, so they had to get. They had to get the property cleared and, and that, that's been taking place over the last five or six years, so.
I mean, I'd be in favor of going with the Ag Advisory Committee's recommendations, which shouldn't be any problem. Because if, you know, the property is being farmed in good faith, there's obviously some doubt about that amongst the Ag Advisory Committee. But it sounds like you're moving forward in the right direction so that, you know, before any additional permissions are granted, that the barn be inspected and found to be consistent with agricultural use. And then it could be approved, that, you know, if there's a, a doubt about it, then a look could be taken once it's in production and then that would eliminate any doubt and it could be approved at that time.
And would this be code enforcement's responsibility to go out every year or who would, who would inspect it?
Right, how does that work?
It would be a first that we would, you know, make that judgment or go out there. We just inspect empty buildings and then, you know.
So they want to build a barn, is this?
It's already built.
Is that the barn?
Yeah, yes.
So did we cite the location for this barn?
You approved this in two thousand eighteen, this is a reapproval with these.
With the modifications, right?
Just these modifications, which are minor in nature.
No.
Well, does it seem reasonable?
Well, it's minor in nature when an ag reserve isn't considered. And the way that the Ag Advisory Committee is saying is that the changes that were made, although the septic was moved away from the wetlands, which seems to be a good idea, it also, and the Ag, um, the well, the placement of the well was inconsistent with agricultural use. So what is our recourse to protect the integrity of an agricultural easement? I guess is my main question.
We would get a call.
If that's in question.
If somebody felt that that easement was being violated, they would call the town attorney's officer, code enforcement. We would send somebody out there and look to enforce it.
Okay. What is the enforcement mechanism?
It depends on the nature of the, of what is not being adhered to. But I mean, you could generally, it's in dereliction of your approved site plan and that's one of the things, they'd be in dereliction of their site plan.
How is it enforced if what they're saying is, you know, that the permitted agricultural use as defined in New York Agriculture and Markets Law three zero one is what's allowed on the ag easement? How is that enforced?
That's just a, we have that in everything, so every, every bit of farming. So if they're doing anything outside of what is, um, an accepted bona fide agricultural use, then they're in degradation of their easement. And we would either be in Justice Court or Supreme Court, depending on the nature of what's going on.
Well, it seems that we, we should ask for a confirmation that there is actually agriculture going on if, if the advisory board is saying that they don't.
I just did.
Can Harry Ludlow submit something?
There was evidence in the record to that effect when you originally approved the site plan. So what you're doing is, is you have an advisory committee giving an opinion. And, and the question is, you just heard from counsel as to if there's a violation. So the, the easement, as you know, allows open and fallow in landscaped areas as approved by, by this board, which, if you go out there today, is probably consistent with that. The question is, is there an obligation to farm under the easement and, on any agricultural land? And other than the current recent easements that the town has acquired, which we'll call enhanced development rights, where there's an affirmative requirement to farm over a certain period of time. It isn't like any one day, it could be over a year or two. If you're not farming, then the town has the right. If you don't have it farmed, they can inquire and determine if you don't, then they can get a tenant for you to come farm. And that's only in those enhanced development rights.
Yeah, and that's.
In all the other easements, there's no obligation to farm the property. And for many years, this property was not farmed.
That's good to know, thank you.
It was left to be grow and, and successional growth. And it was only this current owner coming in and saying, wait a minute, I want to farm, I farm this. And they took out all the cedar trees and relocated and did everything and trying to get this to a point. And to engage the farmer and it's sort of the chicken and the egg. This is an isolated farm parcel. There's no base of operation for the farmer to have his tools, his equipment or whatever. And that's what the premise was here is they were going to occupy, here's the barn. Start with fruit trees, which I believe you can see, um, perhaps on that.
Is it some of those apple trees, please?
Sorry, you've been speaking.
So anyway.
So you can come up and just identify yourself. Thank you so much.
You can sit here, if you'd like.
You can sit here.
Claire, while they're coming up, what, um, is it pretty common for an applicant to come back with a revised site plan for us to approve, you know, after having done those changes?
They change things all the time. Yeah, it happens all the time.
But I mean, it sounds like the, the construction and billing just ended up pushing it a foot or two closer. So if, and I'm a little bit confused, the language of that third whereas where if you go back to the site, the eighty-eight point three feet, is that from the property boundary of that corner?
So this corner right here, so I'll show you on the.
Yeah, if you go back to the site plan, maybe just to clarify that.
I'll show you the as-built site plan.
I'm sorry to jump back a little bit. The language on that is a little bit confusing.
All right, so if you see here, the, the as-built site plan right here, eighty-eight point three.
But the, the way that is written, it kind of, my first reading was that that eighty-eight point three feet was from the wetland boundary also. So maybe just the way that whereas is written.
I'll definitely revise it.
And where, where is the original location of the septic system supposed to be? Now, where, where was it initially?
The original location was to the, uh, to the left of the barn. Directly to the left of the barn.
And now it's where?
And now it's located.
Oh, so it's over there, okay.
And what was the reason for the?
So further away from the wetlands.
Um, what was the reason for the change? And you just have to identify yourself, just for the record.
David Harris, contractor on the job, I built the barn.
So can you just let us know what the reason was, um, for the change in the location of the septic system?
They just wanted to get farther away from the house.
From the house? From the house or the barn?
There's a house here.
Is it a house?
And where's the wetland?
Well, there's a house.
This is the original approval.
There's a house up here.
So that's the original approval there, the back of the barn.
Correct.
So, I'm sorry, let me just finish, if you don't mind my, so that where it was originally proposed in the back of the barn, is that prime axol as well?
Yes.
Do you know? So, I mean, I'm asking that question because the, the Ag Advisory Committee says, you know, they moved it into an area and they covered it at prime axol, but the fact is that even where it was originally proposed was also prime axol. So it's one, you know, wherever it is proposed or actually built, it's still prime axol, that it being.
And that's for the house that's on the property?
No, it's for the barn.
Just a barn, it's, it's just a toilet and a sink in that.
No, if, if you look at this site plan, this is the one stamped, approved, signed. Where's the approval, here's the approval. I don't know if you can see it, but this, this is where the septic was. There was a house, it's tight on that lot because of wetland setbacks. And I think they encountered issues with the neighbor about can we relocate it?
The house is.
So that was probably the issue.
The house has nothing.
It's an adjoining neighbor.
Has nothing to do with them.
All right, right, that's where.
It's not their house.
That's where I was confused.
Yeah, there's no house on this property at all.
But you know, just for the record, um, the Ag Advisory is an important committee. It's an important committee to this board and, uh, we value what they say. So, um, when we get, um, a series of comments from them, as they are here, it's our obligation to take a look at them. They're, they're the experienced farmers. We've had this before where people have pretended to farm and they go and they put in a couple of fruit trees and, you know, but they want like a five thousand square foot barn for a non-farming operation.
There are hundreds of trees on the property, though, apple trees at this.
Okay, so Harry Ludlow has been farming this now for three, since nineteen twenty-eight?
Four years, almost, the first two years it was rye and, and wheat. Now we went to apple trees and we're going to expand on that.
What's being stored in the barn?
Uh, tractors, that's, it's just a fork, it's a fork, quark, a garage. And then there's a little office and storage, you know.
Are they, it's being used right now?
It's being used now?
No, no, we haven't done anything yet because we're not a COG.
So Chris Mead owns it, he's leased it to Harry Ludlow.
I'm not sure if that term, is it leased, okay, I don't want.
Could we review the lease?
I don't think it's, it's a handshake.
I don't think.
What's the date on that aerial?
I don't think there's anything, right?
It's October twenty-twenty-two.
I mean, that's our application too. If there's a question, like, it's not, you know, and it's funny because like when we ask questions, it's really a question, it's not an accusation. So the conversation, like, for us, we have to do our due diligence to answer the questions that are being asked here. So if there's not a lease, then an inspection of what's going on there or, you know, to see it for yourself or have a lease.
Uh, this one's two thousand twenty-two.
October twenty-twenty-two, so you're saying there are now hundreds of trees?
I don't see any there now.
Maybe the leaves are all down, we can't see them.
Did this spend April, was this April twenty-two?
Do you want to go point up there where it is?
Does it have a date?
Or you can't really point here.
Are they in the?
So these are old trees? Like it looks like grass lawn there on the left and right side of that are old trees? Up further this way, I'm sorry, right along that path, on each side of that little walking path it looks like.
Oh, to the back of the barn?
Yeah, on the side of the barn, the left side of the barn. It's like a little walkway there, there's trees on both sides, there's trees on both sides of that. See those trees?
Oh, it's on the bottom of it.
Yeah, and then there's more spread out.
Casting shadows or something.
I'd love to see on that.
And what is Ludlow's intention, what is he planting?
We have, we have apples right now. We harvested apples two years now.
This is on the back, on the back part of the barn, not, not, so not that we planted, you know, kind of towards the side or front of the barn.
Yeah, we're going to plant, I'm planting more, you know.
And you say you do not have a C E O that, that for you have nothing inside of the barn at this time?
There's nothing inside of the barn, no.
Which would answer the question why there is no compelling agricultural use or even planned use?
Evidence, yeah.
Or evidence of?
Yeah.
So.
You have plans in your file of what there, what was contemplated for years ago of how this property, their farm plan. But you're hearing more information, you know, now, what is planned in the near future. You know, there are trees that have been planted and installed.
So what is our action here to?
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah, what are we doing?
Consider the modification request.
So the barn is, the barn is.
So you want a modification, you, you want the site plan revised and approved by this board?
So they can get a CO.
So you can get a CO.
Correct.
So the Ag Committee said, we suggest that before any additional permission is granted, blah, 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 the interior of the barn is inspected on an annual basis. Well, you're here for permission today.
Yes.
I'd say why?
Do we need an inspection, I guess?
That's the thing, we've never done it.
It sounds like you're not going to see anything. Like, I don't know what you're looking for.
Well, that's.
Like, could Jeff go there with a member of the Ag Advisory Committee so that any of their doubts are dismissed? Because they see Harry Ludlow there, he explains what he plans to do. And then we've done our due diligence of addressing the comments that they have by going to the site together and then.
I mean, there's nothing preventing you from going to the site, I just, you're, it sounds as though we're going to go to the site and see nothing. So I don't know what that's going on.
Well, he's saying there's hundreds of apple trees there.
Well, there's trees there.
Oh, yeah, we, but you can see the sites. Well, we can inspect them and speak, so that's easy.
Is there equipment, there's nothing in the barn?
There's no equipment yet, no.
So what is the equipment being?
We use it, he brings his equipment over when he needs it. We all got to plan on buying equipment in the barn, but until we're COs, we're not, you know.
Well, I think that some response to, to the Ag Advisory Committee is, is warranted. And, um, can you draft a letter to say that Harry Ludlow is farming this property? And, um, and that it has been planted? And as soon as a CO happens, we'll fill up the barn with whatever we need to fill it up with? To at least respond to them, I mean, they've taken effort to.
Is there an affirmative easement on this?
For a point.
To do, no, I know there's an easing, I know, but there's not an affirmative farming easement.
Before we proceed, um, I'd like to ask counsel a question. Does this board have the authority to send out a planner on an annual basis to?
No, it's not, because once, once you send, you, once you give the permission, you're, you're done your action and everybody moves on with their lives. If there's a, um, a reason to believe that they're a violation of something you've said, then that's another story and we take it up elsewhere, not here.
Yeah, yeah, I was just speaking to the recommendation.
No, we, no.
Well, that's what I was saying, it's just one time, you know, you do site visits all the time, right? Go there, meet Harry Ludlow, walk the space, talk to him, get confirmation within your reasonable belief that they are and will be farming there. And then we've addressed the issues that, I mean.
Well, you're talking about doing that today, not on, on an annual basis.
Right, doing it one time so that you have a clear understanding of what's there, not an aerial that might be out of date. Get eyes on the property so that you can see and bring a member of the Ag Advisory Committee with you if that's something that they want to do. And meet the farmer, right?
I thought the planning board had to come and inspect that.
Nope.
The staff.
Well, the staff does.
He expected, we take, and we go through it and we see that everything lines up. That's what we do.
But right now, it's like your eyes are seeing one thing, his eyes haven't seen it yet. So, like, maybe that's the action to go and see.
So what can, have you had some correspondence with the Ag Advisory Board?
Uh, not, uh, more than the comments that are, uh, in the, uh, the resolution, no.
Well, we don't typically then engage their, their busy people too. But we can reach out to Harry Ludlow, uh, we know him, yes, a little bit. So that would be easy to confirm that and we can report back to you.
I think that's the way to go.
Get a letter from Harry Ludlow saying, I am farming the property and.
Well, we'll probably just call him.
But I think you want something in the record.
Well, they, they can write a letter, this says Harry Ludlow, it's farming parcel. Informally, an informal agreement or whatever that is.
Yeah.
Sure.
Right, and as you said, Jack, once production is going, that this use will be for an agricultural barn or something, just reassurance.
That's exactly what the intention is, yeah.
I mean, I do think that the modifications are pretty small.
And that could just, that could just be a building layout there for, you know, one and a half feet closer to something.
Yeah, the sanitary system was, was definitely. But, yeah.
But it's not like you move from an area of prime, non-prime act to an area of prime act, the whole property is prime act.
I mean, it is taking up a lot more, like, say you're eliminating like four or five rows, like, that is a lot of ag production out. Whereas the placement of it before was a better spot if you were looking to get rows and like move tractors through there. So I understand what they're saying there.
But they've also planted apples where, you know, where it was supposedly.
Your septic guy did and he just chose to move it, right?
No, we discussed moving it and then we got to replot it, you know.
Okay, but you know, when we approve a site plan, we spend a lot of time on a site plan. And we get builders in here all the time who just, oh, well, you know, it was in the way, so we took it out. Site plan is, is kind of like the blueprint.
Okay.
So we really ask you to respect it.
Okay. I've been in town contracting for twenty-two years, I've never had a problem, you know, I'm good.
Good. So, uh, we'll pull it back.
Yep, great.
Okay, we'll table it for today.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I feel better. Okay, no action on that.
No action on that.
I think we're jumping to number.
Yeah, Anthony?
No, I'm going to let Jeff, I'm, I'm working, I'm going to jump to the. So we can jump to number fifteen.
Okay.
Kim Lester Boat Storage. This is actually, uh, pre-submission, we're going to set the conference.
Is this, can you just show us, is this the one with the whole back of the property there?
Yes.
You know, I had asked on this how you calculated the number of boats that are projected to be on this lot? Anthony, I think you said, uh, twenty-two boats and I asked you, how did you calculate that?
I didn't calculate it.
Was it a guess?
It was, it was, no, 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 we, we, we looked at this. They came.
I did a sketch.
Yeah, I was good, I was going to say she.
Why don't you come on up? Anthony, you could stay. Did that identify yourself?
What's that? Oh, sorry, Susanna Herman and consultants for the applicant.
Okay, so let, let, let's just get a basic overview.
All right, so this, this came before the planning board previously, um, for a work session, there was a Z E B A referral, um, to do some dry boat storage out here. And that was part of the discussion was, can you define the area and show dimensions and show how many boats you could fit in a defined area? Basically is how it was done, based on, you know, various, you know, boat sizes. Um, and we probably started off larger and I think we weaned it down a little bit, um, you know, when we had discussions with the board and with the zoning board. So it was really based on, on Susanna's sketch, which we asked for her to prepare at that time to show, you know.
I think it has to be a bit more scientific, we have, you know, those boats, some of the boatyards are just horrendous.
They are.
And this is no double decker, this is.
No, 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 no boat racks, um.
That's my little sketch.
Remember the feeling it looked very tight?
Yeah.
New York City parking lot is what came up.
Right.
Well, just, just, just to help Jeff out here, remember, he's the one reviewing this application, but this is the scheduled pre-submission conference and all these issues that you have are part of that process, so, you know.
But we might as well get some information.
No, no, I, I agree with you, I agree with you.
You know, you've got equipment that's got to go in there and haul out a boat and there is no room for that.
What's the size of the parcel?
Uh, 55,000 and change, so 1.26 acres.
1.26.
I remember this one, the key issues that I remember were, um, having a, a lot of fence that delineates the edge of where you could place the boats and then also, um, how they're prepared for, um, storage, that they would be drained of any kind of.
Yes, they'd be drained and winterized before coming to the property.
Right.
So at the marina or wherever they pull it out of the water, they would winterize them and then basically it'd be like valet parking. You would bring them on the trailers and the, the people who own the boats would just leave them at the site, um, during the off-season.
Miss Stain on trailers, isn't that being blocked?
Uh, I.
Good question.
That is a good question.
That's a good question, but that's what the process is for, right, these are the questions we want to hear.
I work at Whitewater Marine, I'm the finance manager there, so I have a little bit more knowledge on this stuff than maybe the rest of my board members do. You can fit an awful lot of boats on 1.2 acres.
Yeah.
And 22 is not a large number, depending on the size of the boat.
This is ones across the canal from them.
Oh, wow, yeah.
That, that's not what we're proposing.
Yeah.
I mean, it is resort waterfront business, it is an allowable, um, use of the property. We had to go to the zoning board of appeals because there's an existing, pre-existing residence on the property, so there would be two uses. The owners of the property rent that out, uh, to a family and this would be just a way to get additional income for themselves. It's a local family who owns the property, they've owned it for, I think, 100 years. The Allenson Lane name is relative of the current owner, um, so.
So they'll be, will you have size restrictions on each vessel or no?
Yeah, I did this sketch based on boats being 23 to 25 feet, so the, I mean, we're not talking about giant boats. And those are, you know, your recreational boat that you would see. And they would just be parked there for the winter.
Yeah.
And then removed.
Do they have a forklift on site or are they going to?
I, I don't think so.
Because if not, then they're all gonna, they'll all be on trailers.
That, that was my understanding, no one's mentioned a forklift. I can ask that question, but I, I think the, the idea was just to leave them on the, the home, the boat owner's trailer and park it.
So, and Greg will answer this, is there a lot of jockeying back and forth when, because I have a vision of, you know, the guy in the middle wants his boat.
Well, that's what a valet parking, people are trying to.
Yeah, that's why I equate it to valet parking, yeah.
They'll come and take, move, move two out and take that one out and put it back.
Well, in theory, when, when you do winter storage like this, you ask people when they're looking to get their boat in the water and you stack the boats accordingly. But inevitably, the plan never works and you have to jog.
Right, I mean, they're only, in my drawing, they're only about three boats deep, so, and it's not a huge.
And you have access all, all around, so it'd be easy to get something like, you know.
And I talked to the homeowner about putting a fence specifically around the boat storage area, which I think logistically would be difficult because of the backing in and out. And what we had suggested instead would be to do a curb, like a little Belgium block curb around, it'll be a gravel area and just do a Belgium block curb around it to delineate it, but if somebody needs to back a boat, you know, you're not hitting a fence.
Yeah, you're not constrained by that.
Yeah, the only fence, I think that, from what I recall, is a little while ago that we looked at it, was a fence at the 100 foot from the wetlands boundary line because you really wouldn't want to be backing over that part.
Well. We could do that, I mean, I think a, a curb would work just as well to delineate it.
Yeah, I think, right, a low curb would be good. And so the, the residence stays the residence.
Correct, there's no, they're not proposing to do anything like that.
And what's on either side here? We have another boatyard to the.
So residential property on all, all other sides?
It's all residential.
Well, it's multifamily, it looks like on the ones on the south. Here, but all residential.
Looks like down the road.
So there's going to be some community response to this at the public hearing, right?
There was no one who showed up at the zoning board public hearing.
And there's no fence around there?
There's a lot of hedges.
Yeah, I think you were talking about.
There's very, um, mature screening along the street and along the north and south.
Along the street as well.
Along the street, very.
You can see the, right to the, on that side.
But we're certainly going to.
Actually, all three sides seem to have.
There'll be, there's a transition, 20-foot transition setback, that's what they did there. So if we need landscaping, you know, like, there is hedge there actually, I was out there a long time ago.
It's a very substantial, um, evergreen hedge on the, the street side.
On the street and along the property line too.
Yeah, I think it's red cedars around the southern property line, um, to the south is cottages. And then beyond that.
Are those seasonal cottages?
I don't know if people live there year-round. I'm pretty sure they're rented out sort of long-term.
Would this be subject to, um, fire marshal referral?
There's nothing in there any updated yet?
No.
Well, it's definitely. Two multi-its. They're not marked as seasonal.
I'm sorry, did, will this be subject to fire marshal referral or no?
Yes, all site plans are, not, not the pre-submission conference, pre-submission conferences, we don't do any referrals. When we do a formal site plan, it would be referred to the fire marshal.
Um, battery recharging? Do you know if they're going, they're kind of doing that?
I, I don't know, is that something that's typically done during?
Does Z E B A approval does, yeah, does Z E B A approval does limit any maintenance or repair or any of that sort?
It limits the.
Yeah, you cannot have any of that at all.
Just parking?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, because that is a fire hazard.
Okay, yeah, I, I don't think they anticipated doing that.
So what are we looking for, for a public hearing, um?
I guess more.
March knife?
I believe a proposed march knife.
I have to just take a call.
Is that good, march knife?
I'm here in fact, it's a work for me.
So motion to, um, set the public hearing, it's complete, Jeff, I'm assuming.
Correct.
A motion by George, second by Craig, all in favor, opposed, extensions, five, five in favor, two absent.
Okay.
Thank you. See you March knife.
Thank you.
To date.
So we'll move on to number 17. Zarabi Family Trust, this one's an extension, I request for an extension. There we go.
I like being boat storage.
You need to put the dates in there, in the description.
Uh, I think I did revise it, so, yes, I'll include that moving forward.
So it's extension?
Extension for 180 days, the original approval was good for 180 days. They've submitted final paperwork to close out the, uh, the approval, uh, but to bring them current, they need the extension.
Okay, so to what?
Yes, so 180 days of break up to March 10th, 2020. 2023.
So an extension to March 10th, motion?
Motion.
By Craig, second.
Second.
By Gloria, all in favor, opposed, extensions, uh, five in favor, two absent, to March 10th.
All right, we'll move on to site disturbances. Number 20.
Okay, by the way, Janice, Janice is going to be drafting something to have the, uh, re-veg plans administrative through her office and get them off our agendas, which will be a godsend for us. Uh, and Jeff will shepherd, you know, carefully shepherd them.
That's, that's a good, that's a good idea, actually.
I.
But if there's a con, if there's a tricky business or a conflict, then it'll come to us.
It'll come to you, yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, no, I was, but I, I, I think we were talking about it requiring bigger, bigger stuff. Because when, if they just put little twigs in, so that's, I'm just making that point that I really.
Larger caliber trees.
I think we really should be requiring larger caliber trees because it's, if it's gonna, that'll help replace what was taken, but it's still not going to replace it.
The old stuff.
And if, if it's a little more onerous, maybe they would, people would be more careful.
Well, I think that's a separate issue, I think, weren't you working on that in terms of the re-veg plans?
I'm just, I'm just saying as, as part of, as part of moving it administratively, I'm recommending that we up the ante.
Okay, we'll add that to it.
I will, maybe I'll come up with something sensitive, calipers, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I'm not exactly sure what, what we, what we request now, but.
It seemed that Janice was working on something like that, I don't know if it tells you the cracks, but, um.
They have, but we could start with a red record.
But it was about, gosh, I don't remember, it was about size.
Yes, I mean, because it, it's.
It was about size. You know, you can replace it with a one caliber size tree.
Yeah.
A one inch, two inch tree, yeah.
Yeah, two inch tree.
There's, there's really no negative if you just clear cut and then replace. And I think personally, I'd like to make it a little more ne, negative, so people would think about it a little more.
Yeah, I agree with you on that, because you remove, you know, 10, 12-inch oak trees and you replace a two-inch caliber tree for, you know, it's, it's.
I'm not wearing green today, but I do have a green pen.
So just to clarify, uh, we adopted the standards that the environment division, who generally handled, uh, revegetation plans, they require, uh, three and a half to four and a half caliber for, for trees. Uh, the gallon sizes differ depending on the type of, uh, shrub or plant, but, uh, those are the current standards. So we would probably have to increase that number from three and a half, maybe four and a half to five and a half. Uh, just kind of baseline for that.
Yeah, I, I know Marty Shea's office gives you those, those directions. I'm just saying, as, if we're going to move this administratively, let's not lose sight of maybe making it a requirement.
More of a consequence for, for moving, for, for mature trees and putting them back, something that'll take 20 or 50 years to get, to get it back to that size.
Yeah, and I mean, the purpose is to protect the aquifer and so we need, we need, and carbon sequestration.
Anthony, do you want to take it or do you want Jeff to take it?
I've got it, I'm going to, I'm going to.
You're going to do it?
Yeah, I'm working with Jeff, obviously.
Okay.
Okay.
So you have a revenge?
Yeah, so this one is.
19.
Number nine.
19.
Number 20, actually.
20.
Number 19, I believe it's Anthony's.
Oh, that's Anthony.
It's Fair, oh, Fair Hills, oh, yeah.
Well, what about 48 Woodland Road?
That's mine, that's mine.
Okay.
It's rare that I get.
Okay.
Let me open this up for you.
Page 46 in our.
46.
So this was right off of Scuttle Hole Road. Uh, Jason Tudawosnovsky, uh, farmland.
Yep.
Uh, this property is, uh.
That's where the fire was.
I'm sorry?
That's where there was a fire.
Yes, yes, yes. Uh, this lot actually comes with an easement, a scenic easement that borders the, uh, farmlands. Uh, they are limited to 35% allowable clearing. They want to restore about 22.7% in vegetation that's been disturbed. Lot size 70,359 square feet. Uh, I'll give you an idea of the planting plan. It didn't open up, actually. Takes a little longer. So I've actually gone through this planting plan with the applicant a couple of times. There were some ornamental plantings, as you can see on the schedule, that I had him separate from, uh, my list of native plants, uh, just to make sure that they were satisfying the intent of the code for APOD. The ecology here is essentially like, uh, successional shrubland. So the plantings and the planting plan is more consistent with that type of ecology. So I'm not sure if you have any questions regarding the plan. We have this before you for consideration.
Mostly shrubbery or there's trees in it too?
No, trees, no, there's a great assortment of trees, oaks, uh, red, red maple, maples, uh, some pitch pines and also some birches. So I had him include those as well, uh, so you have good assortment of canopy and understory. And again, I had him separate the, what we would call ornamental and non-native, that won't necessarily, uh, offer any, uh, restoration elements to the property. This way, we at least meet the requirement of the code.
Are you saying that the ornamentals are not part of the calculation to meet the code?
Correct. So I had him.
I wasn't, I wasn't exactly sure.
Um, my apologies, well, uh, with these type of plans, and this is a pretty large project, I wanted to make sure that they didn't overload the project itself with ornamental plantings, which unfortunately does not feed into our effort, isn't doing anything much for that, so.
So they're going to be, they'll be even, they'll have more coverage than.
100%.
Got it.
And so this has to be planted in the spring, that, we also included that time limit, right?
Yes.
It has to be done within.
The approval, yes, the approval has to be done within 90 days, uh, from the commencement, but we've advised folks, uh, we've had a mild winter thus far, uh, but I think that's starting to change, so we've advised them to wait until the springtime to plant. There are a few applicants that want to kind of, you know, run in there and knock it out, but, uh, we've advised them to wait until spring just in case. Between the time of planting and my time to go out to do an inspection and that the, the overall survival of those plants, what's paramount here, so, uh, we've advised them to wait. If you have the spring, the summer, the fall, then there's a greater chance that they will survive.
Was this a new construction?
Correct, yes.
Is some Fair Hills pretty built out though, up there?
This is actually another area of Fair Hills, uh, this is right off of Scuttle Hole Road. I know what you're talking about, that one's, uh, closer to Brick Hill.
Yeah.
Uh, this one's right off Scuttle here and then there's another section up here that's also Fair Hills.
Uh-huh, yeah, that's the one I'm thinking of, yeah.
Yes.
I remember that application, do you remember it, Anthony? Rick handled it.
That is true, Rick.
Yeah.
All right, any additional questions, concerns?
Okay, we have motion to approve this.
Motion.
Motion by Gloria, second by.
Second.
Second by Craig, all in favor, opposed, extensions, six in favor, one absent.
And lastly, we have, um, Deerfield Heights, number 21. Lot four is 1870 Deerfield Road. This one's also a new construction piece. Sits on a 208, uh, 800, 2800, 818 square foot property. They are permitted to clear, uh, 23.74% of the property. I know that number is, uh, different than what we're accustomed to. So they want to restore 12.4% of the vegetation that's been disturbed on the property. Their vegetation, permitted vegetation, uh, was as per file covenant. Open this up for you.
Anthony, is this, is this an example of the driveway, of all the clearing on the driveway being computed in or not?
Well, this, this is the flagship, I think, so the, the code counts for the flagship not being counted. And I'll give you the, the plan, there's an aerial right off of Deerfield Road.
26,000 square feet every vegetation, that's a lot.
It's a lot, yeah.
Yeah, I did a site visit, uh, and most of the vegetation was essentially gone, unfortunately.
Just down to the dirt?
For the most part.
Boy. Is this APOD?
This is APOD, yes, correct.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is a prime, this is a prime example of what I'm talking about.
This is where the whole line, right? Right, right.
The issue is, the actions occur before we get an opportunity to even witness it.
Right.
And who, and you can't see it because it's, it's so far back off the road.
Absolutely right.
But what is, what is a, what a property like this, we're only seeing this because of overclearing, which was picked up, what, the final survey?
Yes, generally either when they apply for building permits and for whatever reason, the calculations, uh, don't add up, and/or at the final CO stage, the request for a final CO.
But I'm just, so during, during a billing permit application.
I'm gonna answer your question.
Yeah.
I'm gonna answer your question.
Yeah.
That's not the, the, the site disturbance process was supposed to be before that person gets a building permit to clear anything. They come to this board with their sixteen hundred dollars with a plan showing what their clearing is. We say, that looks good, it conforms, then they go get a building permit.
Right, so why, why isn't that being followed?
So what's happening?
It's become a, a mechanism for, um, and I don't know, for, for, for rectifying forgiveness or whatever word you wanna use.
Forgiveness.
Yeah.
Uh, but the, 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 the procedure has, long before I got here. I know I did a lot of these in private practice.
So Anthony, include that in your document.
Discussion.
This should be a substantial fine for overclearing and doing that before.
We've been dou, we've been doubling the fees. You know, I, 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 I hear you.
But that's piddling.
Okay.
How do we fix the process?
That's what we're talking about.
Well, that's what I'm gonna, I'm gonna sit down with Janice again, but I've raised this before, I'm, I'm.
She's very keen to, to, to work on this.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I just see overclearing, just walking through my neighborhood.
Yeah.
And if they just go to the building department and they get a permit, I, I don't really know what the process is, but.
So generally, the building department's supposed to review those applications and verify whether or not they have clearing restrictions on the property. Now, whether or not that survey or site plan that's submitted actually depicts that accurately, we don't know. So the building department may issue a permit with a survey that has old clearing calculations on it as opposed to current clearing calculations. Another issue too is their processing time. So most of these applicants decide, you know what, it takes me five months to get a building permit, let me go ahead and just knock out some trees, start with a clean canvas, and then by the time I get a permit, we can go ahead and.
Well, whatever, whatever the reasons are, you know, it, it's, this is how it's, it's been done. But part, you know, so now you have an improved property that has clearing restrictions, the survey shows that it complies, they're doing an addition. They show that they comply. The building department's looking at a survey, a certified survey, saying, okay, the numbers comply. Um, and that being said, I, I, I could also say that I can't tell you the number of times a building inspector, all of them, by the way, have come to me with the question, this doesn't look right to me, and this, so I, I will tell you, because we have them, we have dozens of these applications. The building department does pick up on them, um, a lot of times, but not all the time. Um, you know, it's, so I understand, you know, we're gonna work on here.
So there's a little bit in the process that's broken.
Yeah, it's gotta be, we gotta fix it a little bit.
It's gotta fix it, we gotta fix it a lot.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We, we, we're gonna wreck the aquifer.
Does the building application, um, like completeness rely on an approved site plan?
Not typically, it's not on their checklist, as far as I know.
So, uh, 'cause I used to work with the building department as well. So generally, if it gets to, it gets past what we would call the counter, which is your initial submission, the building inspector then does a review on the survey or site plan that's submitted. Uh, they're supposed to have clearing calculations. If you're in APod, it's supposed to have clearing calculations. Or if you're in a subdivision that has clearing calculation or clearing restrictions, again, it has to have clearing calculations on it. So at that stage, they're supposed to catch the issue and then refer them back to our department for an application. But if the survey itself is not necessarily accurate or says that they're in compliance, then we don't receive anything until after the construction is complete.
So you, having been on the building department side, where do you think it can be tweaked and improved?
It could be on the initial application stage, uh, before they submit an application for building permit or before it's reviewed. They can come to the planning department for verification. We can go out even, uh, upon their.
I wanna talk to Janice about this, if you don't mind, before we start giving ideas about how, I, I hear you, I just, I gotta get Janice, because if it's gonna require code changes, then, um, then we're gonna have to deal with it, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I hear you, I hear you loud and clear. Uh, I'm gonna discuss it. There's Claire, she heard everything too. Uh, so we'll move on this, actually.
I mean, we're, we're trying to make it better.
I agree with you. I'm not, I'm not being argumentative, I don't want you to think that, I'm on your side here, five hundred percent.
I'm saying that for, for the audience, that's not.
Hundred percent. Um, but we'll see if we could, uh, come up.
Good, good, thank you. Okay, Jeff, you're done? Did we?
Yes.
No, we didn't.
No, we didn't vote on your film.
We didn't vote, yes.
Okay, so you were.
So this, uh, again, uh, this applicant wants to restore twelve point four percent of overcleared vegetation. It doesn't sound like a lot, uh, but it is a two hundred thousand square foot piece.
Twenty-seven thousand square feet of, of overclearing.
Right. Uh, and again, I've visited the site myself. Uh, this is pretty on par with the amount of disturbance on the property.
Wow, everywhere.
Uh, so yes, uh, the revegetation plan itself does bring this property back into compliance, and obviously we would recommend that they wait until after the spring.
Is there some elevation on this property? Is it, is it?
Uh, sloped, it does slope up a bit towards the back. I remember it took me a bit to walk back here where the tennis court's constructed. Uh, but most of the elevation's back here, it's fairly flat around the front. But again, this was after some major site, site work.
Right. Okay, any other questions? Motion to approve this re-veg plan by George, second by Gloria, and all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, six in favor, one absent. And now we'll go to Anthony.
We'll do my stuff, but the only thing is I have one applicant here, um, so can we just do theirs first?
Sure.
I appreciate it. That's number nineteen, it's a clearing matter.
Oh, that's.
Which means you know I have it.
So it's, it's.
Tricky?
It's not, it's a, it's a tricky one.
My, my note was, this is a problem.
About this one?
Yes.
You got the wrong note.
That's, well.
Yes, this is a strange, uh.
It is a strange.
We've got three people here, so.
We've got, uh.
To handle my problem.
I mean, it looks like an English garden that was put in.
So, well, that's existing.
Here, can I just, uh, give a little?
Go ahead, overview, please.
Just real quick, I took this over, it's another one I took over for Jackie, you've had a discussion once on this property. Um, there's a, um, forty-eight Woodland Farm Road, um, let me see if I have. Okay, here's the, here's the, try to, give you a sense, so it's this wooded property back here. It's not a flag strip. Um, it's a landlocked parcel, but does have easement and access easement that provides access to the lot. Uh, they have a building permit that was issued for this property for, uh, a tennis court.
Is this off of Middle Line Highway? No?
Yeah.
Hold on.
Middle Line's, it's not directly off of Middle Line.
What?
Let me hear, what I could do is.
Uh, it's off of Roses Grove.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm sorry.
What?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna get a better, um.
It's off of Roses Grove.
Roses Grove.
Well, yeah, I, I walked, Woodland Farm Road is off of Middle Line Highway, off, in Roses Grove.
So. All right.
I think it's off of Roses Grove, oh, we'll, we'll see in a second.
So here's the, here's the property up here. Um, so where are our watermill towers, it comes over here, Deerfield is over here.
That, that straight line up to the top, that's Middle Line Highway.
That's Middle Line Highway.
Yeah.
So yes, it's.
So that's the accent.
So you're, yeah, you're familiar.
I walked, I've walked, I walked that road a hundred times.
That west portion of Middle Line, yes.
Yes, yes, yeah.
So.
I live around the corner.
Stop, there you go. Uh, so a building permit was issued for this property for the construction of a tennis court up here, as I showed on the aerial. Uh, the clearing is all associated up here with development. Uh, it's all wooded in the back. They got a building permit for this tennis court. That building permit was conditioned on the applicant doing a revegetation plan subject to this board's approval. Uh, the applicant, um, came to this board, wanted to transfer clearing rights, the planning board wasn't inclined to go in that direction. Uh, asked for a revegetation plan. It looks like they're, I don't know the exact square footage, but it's three thousand and change square feet, forty-nine hundred, there it is. Um, and what they're proposing to do is revegetate that clear area of the forty-nine hundred to bring it into, uh, compliance. Uh, the, the primary issue that the, the, the applicant is asking for is this entire development here, all of this is completely walled in with a retaining wall all around here.
It's what?
A retained wall, a retained wall, I'm sorry, all around here.
It has a retaining wall around it.
So, um, with this also masonry retaining wall in the center of this area, the applicant's asking the ability to revegetate, uh, but to keep, uh, the retaining wall within the portion of the revegetation, with the exception of this masonry wall in here, which would come out. Um, and so rather than, um, I told them to come and speak to the board and to, to bring somebody to, to discuss the retaining wall and engineer something.
Can you bring it back to aerial again, and then?
Sure.
And, and zoom in on that property?
Yeah.
When I first took a look at this, I thought, well, why don't they just put the tennis court there?
In that area, that's, that's why I'm looking.
I think we had this discussion.
And, and, and I don't know why, I mean, I'll ask the applicant that question.
Why didn't they, because the tennis court is installed now, right?
No, no.
No, no, no.
Oh, it's, okay, it's not, yeah, so.
There's concerns, again, this was the permit as it was when my client bought the property, which called for, what, the scenario, I wonder which we're under, which called for the court to be here and for the re-veg to happen here. There are concerns here with proximity to the neighbor, immediately to the east of the tennis court, and side yard setback concerns, accessory side yard, uh, to the western property line. Um, in addition, you're getting right up, if not over, on portions on the front yard accessory setback, which is why when the permit was applied for by the previous owner, the court was determined by the building department to be here with a re-veg here.
Could, you're pointing at that, but I don't know which way you're.
So the portion that's opened up now was determined pursuant to the previous, the building permit obtained by the previous owner to re-veg that area in the front and put it in the back, for the reasons I stated, plus the accessory structure made more sense in the back. If you look at the lot as a whole, it's incredibly vacant in the back.
Traditionally, a tennis court goes in the rear yard.
Yeah.
With next to the pool.
You're usually gonna need a variance, I think, to put it in the front yard.
Exactly. So.
But it's not really a front yard.
In a required front yard, exactly. So because of that, the building department issued permits, for the reasons I said, putting it here and re-vegging here. The reason we're here today is quite simple. We're, we're fine with re-veg, we're gonna do a, a re-veg plan that Arius is gonna construct. The question is that, uh, in preparing for this, it was determined that the retaining wall, removing it would actually do more harm to the existing vegetation than allowing us essentially to plant around and within it.
How high is the retaining wall?
About four or five feet tall in some areas, maybe taller six feet.
Why is that? Was this a decorative garden area that you put in?
I think this, my client didn't put this in.
It was two property owners, three property owners ago.
Okay, so.
Is, is it, I, I know that area is hilly, it's, is that part of the reason?
It's, it's a slope from the front all the way to the back.
They probably just wanted a flat area, and they, they've walled it in, they've hauled up the soil and then.
Right, and if you wanna speak to what you found, what got us to where we are is the concerns raised by Arius.
Steve with Arius Design, um, the wall they put in is a segmental block unit wall, it's just like concrete blocks, and they stacked on, on top of each other. It's about four to five feet high. Uh, that was about six or seven years ago when that was built, and the vegetation behind it's really filled in, like there's native bayberries coming, there are birch trees, um, there's some ground covers that have come in, so it really is filled in nicely. So we started looking at, they asked, we were asked to say what kind of impact would it be to remove the wall. Couple of concerns. One is, when those walls are constructed, there's a geo grid that goes behind the wall that holds basically every two courses of the block. You put a geo grid in and it goes back into the upland slope of it. So that soil got put on top of the geo grid.
I'm sorry, what's the geo grid, is it like a B-bar?
It's like, it's like, um, it's like a filter fabric almost. But, but it, it, it strengthens the wall so it won't push over over time.
I see.
So it's holding back against that slope, you know, the, the weight of the soil is put on top of it. Our, part of the concern is you start, we start to remove those blocks, that geo grid starts to get shifted to and moved to. That's every two courses of the block wall, that can increase the amount of disturbance. And then we did a little, uh, diagram on, if we were going to remove it, how much soil would we need to bring in to restore the grade to sort of a more of a natural grade? And it was quite a bit, uh, I forget how many cubic yards it was, it was, um, hundred and thirty cubic yards, which is equates to about twelve, eleven trucks.
How much trampling would you be doing when you bring those trucks in?
It's a lot, to be, to remove the wall and then bring in the soil, we started, we, it didn't make sense because it's, it's not like it's a treated timber wall. It's not, it's not like leaching anything. We thought, leave it in place, there's a, vegetation's grown behind it, it seems stable, and there's a plant in front of it with a really nice augmented native planting plan in front of it.
Did you put the, put it in?
No, we weren't part of it. Uh, the, with the construction of the wall? No, no.
How old is it?
I think it's about seven years old.
At all?
Yeah.
Not typically new.
I think it's set, well, it was when the house was constructed or.
Sixteen.
Twenty sixteen, yeah, it was built in twenty sixteen.
What kind of material made up?
It's, it's a concrete block wall, it's segmental unit block wall.
They used them to make, you know, just a huge, three, four ton block.
So you want, so what is there, and do you have any photographs of what's there?
Yes.
Yeah.
So you'd be re-vegging inside?
Basically, the entire thing, there's, if you look inside the, the grid or the, the walls, there's a masonry wall there in a semicircle, that's coming away.
We're getting pictures.
So that little semicircle.
Everything's coming away, it's just the border of that area.
We have the cops taking that little wall.
Is it, we have that, like, sand, right? There's no, that's not plantable soil.
When, you, you go four inches into the ground and you hit beach sand.
It, yeah, yeah, it's, it's definitely, it's typical of oak pine forests.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's amazing how the.
So what's the dimension of this?
Forest actually survives on that little bit of soil.
Circle parts.
What's the width, what's the width of that inclusion?
That's what I just asked.
Sixty-five, I would say, feet.
Wide?
Sixty-five feet long?
Width, wide, by about a hundred and ten.
That's being, that's being revegetated.
That's being, well, no, that's being revegetated or just the structure itself?
Okay, so the structure itself, sixty-five.
Sixty-five by a hundred and ten.
Wow.
And what, two thirds of that being, uh, being.
It actually looks beautiful, despite the fact that it's not native.
Right, yeah.
Uh, yeah, about two thirds of that is being, would be revegetated, yeah.
And that brings it into compliance with the clearing restrictions. So we're not overclear right now, but with the construction of the tennis court, as per the building permit, we have to revegetate a little less area than the tennis court.
You see, this is, this is one process that's actually happening correctly, right? We have a application to the board.
Yeah.
This would be one that would stick with you.
This one, that's come to us. So what do you?
And it's bizarre scenario, rarely do these permits get issued conditioned on per, on clearing, on revegetation. But that's what happened here, I mean, that's what happened here.
Yeah, I know.
Like I said to the applicant, I said, I've never seen a building department doing this.
I didn't, I didn't, this wasn't my work. I inherited this, but whoever did it, that's, they, they got it done.
We have no problem preparing a plan, we will, we just want your okay to keep the wall so that, then we can forward with the preparation of the planting plan before we spend that money to prepare it and then, you know, come back to you guys. We'll come back to you with the plan, is, uh, basically getting at.
So what's the rationale for this wall being so high?
Because of the, the grade, the, the, the natural grade of the property. I'm assuming when it was, when it was pre-development, it sloped, it was quite a bit of slope there. And when they set the house, where they.
Cut into the slope.
Cause it, with the way it is, the, the, the slope goes from the front and it's going down toward the back.
And in the back, there's a significant, great difference on the back.
Right, yeah.
So they, they had to balance the cut, Phil, I think, where they put the house at a sort of like an elevation where they cut into it and they, you know, so they tried to balance it out.
There are, there are a lot of, a lot of houses built that way, also on, um, Ocean View Parkway, which is just a little further down the road, down, that's the very, very end of Mid, where Middle Line ends on the western side. There, that corner house has like a two, two-story difference between the front and the back.
Yeah.
Arius has prepared a letter, which I believe is in the file that Anthony has, that discusses all of this.
So my question would be, how do you guarantee that you're not gonna overclear when you put that tennis court in?
Can we put a project limiting fence up?
So then that'll all be required.
It's gonna be a condition of the permit, and then there'll, there'll be a survey post-construction to get the CO that'll have clearing on it.
So it'll be an example of what we're talking about ahead of time.
What we normally do is, once we approve a re-veg plan, they do everything, we get, like, like the building department does, like we do when we do a site plan, there's an as-built that's done then. That survey that goes out there says everything that's happened, and then we go out there That surveyor goes out there, says everything that's happened, and then we go out there with that survey and say, alright, this is correct, the clearing is correct, the re-vedge is correct. And if it's not, and we've done this before, we leave the property, call up the applicant, say, go plant some more stuff to the plant. But we will go out there and verify. You know, look, here, what I will say is, had, listening to the board before, you know, if the applicant, if the planning board's gonna go in this direction, then, then we wanna see a robust planting plan with significant, you know, vegetation. That's only my recommendation, if the board's going in this direction, and that's gotta be substantial.
Now, would the lawn remain, or would you?
We remove the lawn, in that area.
In that area.
That has, we, I, I don't know that we always do it, but when I did re-vedge plans, noted on the re-vedge plan, area of lawn should be removed.
Well, that makes sense.
That's, that's no question.
So, this is a constrained site, even though it's quite long. So, when you go in to put this tennis court in, what are you gonna wreck in getting in there?
Oh, you mean, how do we?
Does it affect the property?
Yeah, I mean, this is what happens with builders and contractors.
To go around the site, the.
How, how wide is the property?
The property is a hundred and sixty-nine feet wide. Hundred and sixty-nine feet wide, and.
It's five acres, so.
One thousand three hundred and fifty-three feet long.
There's an awful lot of those lots like that, they're all bowling alleys.
It's a hundred and sixty, and this, this terrace, let's call it, is sixty-five feet wide. So, are you gonna have enough space to get a tennis court, to get construction equipment in there?
Yeah, there's plenty of room there. For, to build back here? Yes, yeah.
And to address the chair's concerns, if there is a mistake, and excess clearing is done, which we don't anticipate, there's room here to further re-vegetate.
You'd have to take out this, look to go.
Right, but, but there is that, that ability to.
Well, let's hope it doesn't.
It's not gonna get to there.
Do you need a retaining wall back there?
Do you need a retaining wall for the tennis court?
For the back?
No, they're not going to, because of the grade, kind of.
It flattens out a bit, yeah.
I guess Jack was already asking, so, in, in having to create access around that side of the property, are you gonna, you'd disturb additional area that would have to be re-vegetated by some kind of path or drive to be?
They can go around the east side of the house.
Yeah, but that's going on property, it's not veget, it's already vegetated, right?
No, between the house and the existing retaining wall, because the, like, the whole property is, the developed property is walled, so.
Oh, okay.
Well, so they have to stay within the existing wall.
May I make a suggestion then?
Go ahead.
Since the planning boards raise these issues, and I think the planning board seems to be okay with considering it, with your re-vedge plan, show the board how you plan on.
Showing access.
Construction methodology plan.
Within the.
Right, does that make sense to the board?
That makes good sense.
But, at the same time, if you do go outside of that because of whatever happened, and you might have to re-vegetate that area that you, that you encroach on in, in making a construction access.
This will have to, when we get the CO, this will have to be conformed to clearing.
So, can I ask? You're accessing Woodland Farm Road from?
I guess you were right, from Middle Line Highway, right?
I'm also a walker, so, I'm snooping all the time.
So, can I ask a simple question?
Sure.
The people who bought this property, it's relatively new owners?
Three years, two to three years, I think.
Do they think that the water that we drink comes from the faucet, or do they know about an aquifer?
They know it's a well.
I mean, they're aware of the aquifer, because that's why they're here before you, instead of constructing it.
A lot of people, you say aquifer, they don't know what you're talking about. So, I'm on a mission now of.
To educate.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we know it, but a lot of people don't. They think it comes from the faucet or the town. They don't know that they're sitting over it.
Broccoli comes to the supermarket, not the farm.
Yeah, right, exactly. So, and they're an APOD, which means nothing to people, the aquifer protection overlay district. So.
So, you know, the real question is for the previous property owner, who felt that they need to create, create that larger area of green lawn when you're watering it with water from an aquifer.
Yeah.
That's where the real issue is.
Yeah, that, that too.
Unfertilizing, right?
My, my question, I, I thought you said they have an easement or something to get to Woodland Farm Road, or they do have?
If you wanna zoom out, it's a, see this long driveway over various properties?
Okay.
That's how they get access off of, what's, what's that road right there?
Woodland Farm.
Woodland Farm Road, that is. And Woodland Farm goes right to Middle Line.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then, it, it seems to end in the woods.
Woodland Farm is, there's a, there's like an old road, a paper road there, that has essentially been converted.
Old Sec Harbor Road.
Even to, I'm talking to the east, Anthony.
Yeah, Old Sec, Old Sec Harbor Road.
Is that a portion of Old Sec Harbor Road?
I believe it is.
Yep.
Unopened.
Unopened, yeah.
Yeah, so the, the driveway continues one property to our east, and then dies into the woods.
But that's, you know, when we were looking at this, Anthony said, look at the amount of clearing on this access driveway.
Well, look at the one to the.
The one near.
Wow, it's enormous, and that did not go into the calculation, Anthony?
I, I have to go back and.
Yeah.
I mean, that is, there's no reason to have that drug.
That is a good guess.
I don't wanna be a bad neighbor.
And these people, obviously, are not there in the winter.
The neighbors or my clients?
Any of them, with, with these long driveways.
Oh, yes.
So, you don't have an action today, we're gonna have the applicant come back with a.
Yes, with all those plans that we're talking about, yeah.
But you're open to keeping the wall?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what we're, a practical.
So, we'll do the re-vedge plan, you wanna put it on agenda again now, or?
I didn't set my agenda yet, get me this up first, because I have to pick an agenda.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Just a real quick, members of the board, number twenty-two, I have Wayne Bruin here, so.
Okay, number twenty-two, Wayne is back, Wayne never leaves. He's a permanent fixture.
Just real quick, this is Jack in Creasy, obviously, you remember this, right?
This is another one I want.
That's right, this is the one on Bayview Drive, where we were doing the lot line change between these two properties, and then to redevelop the properties, if you might recall.
Oh, my God, this is the house that's in the water.
It sits right in the water. So, it's before, that was finally before the zoning board. The zoning board, it's an unlisted action, I had them coordinate, so this planning board to take a look at the plans, only because you're, the wetlands proving authority, we went through all the trouble with the pre-app report. So, the only action here is due to say that you wanna be lead agency, and I will tell this on the board.
Is that, is that a swimming pool to the east of this property? What is that?
I believe, yes.
Looks like a swimming pool. This is that floods, this is the area that you said floods all the time.
But there's a giant house being built. It's, it, there's enough.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, these are my old aerials.
Yeah, there's enough concrete for like the Statue of Liberty or something, I.
Yeah, you're right, they got a wetlands permit for that property.
Yeah, and I didn't have, I didn't have my glasses, so I couldn't read the building permit when I was there Sunday, Sunday a week ago.
Yeah, yeah, but.
Where's the?
Are they raising it? They must be raising it.
They have, I can't even figure out what they're doing, because it looks like it's in a, in a coffered up. Do you know what I'm, you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, so, so when our client came to us.
Wayne Bruin.
Yeah, Wayne Bruin, no shame, our sense, sense of and ruin for the applicants. When we were engaged along with Suffolk Environmental to review this, one of the things we often do is look at what all, what's happening in the adjoining properties. And this is very important, because this house is sitting in the water, and how erosion has occurred because of activities and bulkheads on other properties nearby. But, one of the things that immediately jumped at us is that the conservation board had reviewed and approved the construction of a house immediately adjacent. And one of the things on our plan that has been an impediment, which you reviewed and understand, was on our common boundary line is sort of a low area. That has been wetland vegetation, and when there is high rainfall or flooding, it's.
Like yesterday.
So, that's been characterized as wetlands, and that's what's impeded, you know, the development on our property. Nonetheless, that was also identified for the property next door, but you can now see the development. We provided in the record a copy of that site plan of what was going on. But, so now you can actually see, at the time when we first applied, they hadn't started construction, but now it's happening.
Oh, my gosh.
I see a pool, a pool story, it's a small house.
This was, remember, this, there before you, because of the lot line change, therefore, you're going to do the wetlands permit, this went through, through the conservation board.
It looks like there's a con, it's a lot of concrete, maybe for retaining walls around the septic system and all of that stuff.
I, I was climbing over it last Sunday, and I couldn't figure out what they were doing.
But in this case, I'm gonna recommend that we just advise the lead agency.
Yes, so, motion.
Thank you for giving me a little word.
Yeah, I mean, but you could see where my client's coming from, it's like, she's just trying to move the house back to a modest little house, and look what's going on on the neighboring properties, and, you know, why, why is she having such a hard time?
That was, that was, I was aghast when I saw what was being built.
It's huge.
Yeah. Okay, so.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Motion to take lead agency on this application, motion by George, second by Tom, all in favor. Opposed, extension, six in favor, one absent.
Good, now we'll go back to the beginning. You go to numbers six and seven.
You can move on to that, is it in your locker?
Yeah, they were. And they apologize to, so.
Okay, six and seven, Coastal Vision one and two.
I have both reports attached. They're both basically identical, as this board knows. I tried to make this simple, because the properties are vacant, they're largely square, and traffic's open.
Thank you.
We got a lot of maps submitted at this application, so I tried to.
So, these two lots are right below Lewis Road development?
Yeah, yeah, I'll. I'll try to use my GIS instead. There we go, so I can zoom out a little bit, I'll do that. Yep, so. Yep, here's Lewis Road, obviously, so these properties are just to the east of that. So, Coastal Vision one is the property furthest west here, and Coastal Vision two is the one next to it. This one will give you a little background, because it makes it easier, in this case, I tried to make it simple for myself. So, these are two vacant properties in the R twenty zoning district, they're not in the APOD on this, on this side of the road, or on this side of the railroad, I should say. They're not in any overlay districts, not in New York State Archaeological Sensitive Area, so they are just in the R twenty zoning district. The applicants submitted two separate applications for each property, really for the purposes of trying to establish yield. Ultimately, when they come, and remember, this is gonna be a major subdivision, so it's subject to a preliminary approval. Unlike a minor subdivision, where we try to front-load everything, because they're coming in with a final application at that point with Health Department, we get the benefit of a preliminary with a major subdivision, which is where all the engineering gets done, it's where the environmental that gets done, it's where the yield is established, so.
Okay, so just go, you know, there's people on the board.
Yeah, that's why I'm.
So, preliminary is when it's a major subdivision.
When a major subdivision.
And a major subdivision is determined by how many lots?
How many lots, whether there's a new road, actually, yeah, that's a criteria right there, as a matter of fact. Yeah, so in this case, the number of lots, when you look at them combined, and that's how we're going to do this. We're gonna look at this ultimately as one.
He had six on one, and how many?
Yeah, well, that, what happened was, just so you know, within, the applicant couldn't be here, he was totally okay with the report. They're the ones who came to me and said, we're gonna give you a bunch of maps, and then you could tell us what it is you want. That's my favorite kind of application. You know, the question for them was yield, do we put in a park, do we not put in a park? So, they have all sorts of maps of all sorts of stuff. So, what I tried to do was, take this report, and now get them to not do seventeen different maps, they're gonna do two at the next phase, and then I'm gonna go through in the report what those issues were. As you can see, it's pretty straightforward here, these are, you know, canvas, clean canvas. And so, I'm gonna go through the first report, which is Coastal Vision one, and then it's gonna be very similar, obviously, for Coastal Vision two. But, obviously, we know, like I said, it's right, and by the way, that's the East Quag Mobile Home Park, right adjacent to it. Right down here. Although, I'm pretty sure we have some type of pending application to move a bunch of these to the other side.
The other side.
Yes, yes.
There's an application, right, and what's the big open space?
This, this down here?
Yes.
Okay, so this, this is just a developable piece of property, we did a pre-app on this for a density incentive type of subdivision, while we were in the middle of reviewing another application, but they never moved forward that. So, this, this property is, is ripe for development as well. I should point out that you have, these are the two properties in question, this is open space here, the town owns this piece, and I believe, since we have the GIS here, might as well do it.
And Lewis Road is right above?
Well, Lewis Road is really over here.
Okay.
And so, you can see, we do have here open space, and even over here, some open space. So, there is some, some reason here to, to.
Some trees left.
We want to keep the trees. So, looking at a standard versus a, a cluster plan, and then this is very consistent for the other properties as well. I think in this case, I don't think the planning board's going to require an onsite park here. We don't require them very often, but if the planning board was to do it, you don't have to make a decision now, we could always look at it. But if you wanted to do an onsite park, you could, that, then we'd go on the yield map, and then it'd get excluded from yield. Otherwise, we then would take the park fee, like we've been doing in most instances, and then the, the area of the park doesn't come out of yield. So, that's how the way they've been doing it. Under that assumption, then they could proceed with a, a park, a yield plan that would remove the park. With respect to part of what they're doing with their yields, is they're showing these roads, these paper roads in between the properties being abandoned, so they could acquire the, the land area and do their yield based on that. I don't personally have an issue with that, but there's a question that these two lots are not part of the subdivision for which these properties, roads are noted. So, there's a question of whether or not they can actually abandon them, this was raised by, by Dave Wilcox with me.
Is it, this is not an old file map?
This isn't, but the old file map up here does reference these roads down here, but not the lots.
Is there an open map?
I was just gonna ask that, thank you.
Yeah, is there an old file?
David and I didn't come across anything, like I said.
It would be old, right?
The, we'd have to go back, like I said, the, what we have on record. It doesn't mean that they can't be abandoned, by the way, we just have to do more legal research to see what we have on old file maps, title certifications.
Sure.
Okay. So, part of what I said in the second, as it relates to the standard versus the PRD, to do your yields without the road abandonments on this property, I don't believe they would have a seven lot yield, I believe they would have a six lot yield. Of course, this needs to be verified with, with the appropriate.
Well, if, if they can't abandon the road, they can't join the two properties and develop them together, or can they?
You raised a, a very good question that Christine sent to me, that if they can't abandon it, what, what exactly can they do, right? Can they improve it? So, to that point, though, it doesn't mean that you can't look at a single subdivision. If at the end of the day, this second lot is where we wanna get the open space, because it's next to the open space, then this is where we wanna cluster the lots, we would absolutely look at the two properties, even if they're not co-joined, per se.
But leave the road.
But leave the road.
Well, you'll leave the old file, but it's a very similar thing to Lewis Road.
Yeah, that, that's right.
There's the old file map, old file lots there, that are right in the middle of the golf course.
Yeah, and like I said, some were abandoned that were able to, some that weren't able to. So, in this case, you know, we noted it, that we're gonna do the further legal research and title research.
Now, do they have to do that, or we?
Well, we could do whatever we can internally with our own, and, and Randy's on notice that he might have to have a lot of title work done to see, you know, and then that would be on the applicant.
Yeah.
Not totally burdening myself.
Anthony, you said that the total yield is actually six?
It may be, in other words, if, if they can't do the abandonments, they would have less yield than what they're showing.
Do they gain an extra?
What's that?
Do they gain an extra, like, the seventh, the seventh lot, if they deem it for affordability, wasn't there some?
Well, I'm gonna get to that, actually. So, what'll happen is, if this is a, if they're, if they're allowed six lots, that's their yield, then their yield goes up to seven, they have the density, not their yield, I shouldn't say their yield. They could do it, they got a density incentive for a seventh lot then, so then we get one more.
One for the housing.
So, we have to do that, the second part, any type of flag lots, they have to be, if they're on a yield map, they gotta be one and a half times in, in the R twenty zone, within the bulk of the property. So, you gotta have the thirty thousand square feet in the bulk of the property, excluding the flagship. This is for yield purposes, by the way.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
So, I put that in there.
I'm sorry, is that, that density, the affordability, that density increase, is that mandated?
Yeah.
It is.
And as much as six.
But they can buy out of it, if I, or is, in the past, they were able to.
In the past, that's, that's all at the discretion of the powers that be here, and we've sort of gotten out of taking the money, because we just don't wanna build housing, we can leave it to the people who build housing, to build housing instead of the town.
So, you have also just reduced the number of, the number of lots, made the lots bigger, so they don't trigger the.
That's right.
Triggered.
So, what we've been doing, if you're gonna get a subdivision, we would probably say, build the lots, you know, because we need single-family lots.
I won't interrupt you anymore.
No, no, you can, that's, that's good. Number four, they have to comply with a hundred and twenty-foot lot width, so on the yield map, they gotta show that. So on the yield map, they got to show that. They also should show lot depths on Old Country Road. If they're going to use the road to provide access, they should show depth sufficient enough that you would be able to get a buffer on there, even if it's not the map that you're going to go with. Because the purpose of a yield plan, of a standard yield plan, is that it's got to be a real subdivision. You can't just throw it together and say, "I have the yield." It has to be a reasonable option for this board to consider. So a yield map then needs to show, we can provide the kinds of buffers that you would require even if we don't use this map. And that's what we normally do. So that's why I've said that there. Road alignment and cul-de-sac requirements shall comply. They should show the LIPA utility lines and the limits of clearing. I think there's just some clearing in the back of the property along the railroad, but not much. And then, to your point, then, in this particular case, the density incentive would result in a total of seven lots. So this would be a major subdivision because they show the new roads. This is an unlisted action under SECRE, so they're going to submit a long environmental assessment form. And to this, to the point of the board here, and I discussed this with Randy, you know, this is in East Quag. We know there's a lot of activity in East Quag. We've got that property to the south that is also ripe for development. So the big goal here is we got to protect the trees. You know, as part of this, this is not an APod, but you'll see as I get through my recommendations that I'm treating it like it's APods, and, you know, so we'll go through that. Conformance with the comprehensive plan. Again, nothing was mentioned specifically in the comp plan. However, Randy was good enough to point out that in the East Quag 2008 Environmental Impact Study Plan that they did, it did point out these two properties, basically to develop them at half-acre density. So there was no proposed zone change for these properties. In fact, they were contemplating shifting development further away from the creek up to the, to the side of the highway.
How far is this from Mystic Creek?
That I don't know, actually.
I think it's close.
It's, yeah, well, I consider everything in this area fairly close, you know, to East Suckley Creek.
But the 2008, there was what, a Hamlet study for?
Yeah, and East Quag, you know, that's where a lot of the zoning recommendations came out. These two properties were specifically recommended for a half acre, which is still the R-20 zoning.
I was going to say it's zoning.
So it's saying that, zone that way, actually. You know, so the recommendation was sort of consistent with the existing underlying zoning.
Okay.
The park requirement, again, it would be about 13,000 square feet here. So we'd probably just take the payment of the fee. We did have a public hearing with a 10-day written comment period. This was in October. We received one letter, and it was just the general concerns about yield, some mapping deficiencies, open space preservation, groundwater concerns, and general impacts to the environment. But it was just the one letter. We did our referrals, and we received referrals back from the Conservation Board. To be fair to the Conservation Board, they were looking at seven different maps, and they went into mode. And so, you know, look, I think they, we don't have any wetlands here, but I think they've outlined, you know, they like to see as much open space preserved, as much as the trees preserve. They would recommend imposing clearing limitations, notwithstanding the fact this is not APod. They would impose 15% fertilized vegetation limitations. And they prefer, obviously, any plant that has less density. They also recommend common driveways for a number of lots. But again, this plan is going to change so drastically that my guess is this plan that they get from us will be better for them.
Well, they'll have the benefit of their comments.
100%, yeah. Fire prevention, interestingly, you said there's fire hydrants and water mains in and around the area. Again, once we hone in the design, but if there's going to be a rodent here...
They're bringing it in.
... hydrant there, that would be the course of action. East Quag Fire District didn't have any specific requirements. They now give out this sheet with general requirements, just general requirements. So I did include them in the back of the report. I'm sorry I didn't attach it. So they said in their letter to us, "We have no specific recommendations for this subdivision." Attach our general comments and recommendations.
What are those general comments?
Oh, 10-inch water main. It's all the standard, almost like the fire, you know, the width of the clearance width. So they're just, whatever general standard is that they would send out almost to any subdivision. So we'll give it to the applicant and say, "Designed it according to these recommendations." But I would let them be aware that there is a fire hydrant that's likely going to be located somewhere.
Have they changed to 1,000 feet?
That I don't know. But we have one very close to this property, and there's public water there. But my guess is any new road would have to have one in there. And they get referred. This will be referred two other times, by the way, if it's supposed to move forward at the preliminary and final. So what I'm saying here is an updated standard plan needs to be provided, which addresses all those issues that I just stated, what comes in, what comes out. And we will do the legal, and they will do the title research to determine if those abandonments are feasible. I think the planning board's preferred plan is a density incentive plan, the minimum open space requirement. It's not APod, it's R-20, so it would be 25%. We're going to review these concurrently. And so as a general rule, I think that the idea would be to cluster open space on this side and to put your development closer to the development on the other side. That would just be, I think, it doesn't, doesn't fully design the subdivision. It gives us plenty of wiggle room to look at it and move things.
But keep it as where the house is.
I think that's accurate, is we want to make sure the open space stays next to the open space and we put the development next to the development.
Right, and it's not fragmented, yeah.
It's not fragmented. And of course, buffers along the railroad and buffers along Old Country Road as well. I think those would be the standard. Interestingly, the Conservation recommends 30-foot-wide easements along the road. I think my report says 50 feet along Old Country Road, so...
What's the setback from the Long Island Railroad tracks?
None. It would just be whatever the rear yard or whatever that yard would be, most likely.
There's no requirement, no?
No requirements. We typically try to put buffers back there just to, you know... But there's no, there's no code setback requirements. If that's a property line, it will be a setback from that property line, whatever that rear yard setback is.
I think they are right-of-way, I think it's 100 feet.
It is.
That's, I was at, yeah.
Yeah.
So they're from the track 100 feet?
No.
The full width.
The full width.
And I think they try to center the track in the center of the right-of-way, although, yeah. I'm not sure, it's perfect, but, right.
So number three, again, that was the 50-foot-wide natural buffer along the railroad tracks and Old Country Road. Number four, I just highlighted this, per the Conservation Board and given the high-quality pitch pine old forest that covers this. I mean, this is a wooded site. I think clearance restrictions should be imposed on the lots, which will go into number five, which would impose a 15% limitation on the fertilized vegetation. And I will say for the record that Randy did point out in his letter to us that this isn't an APod, so, you know, they raised that question. But he's also aware that that's the recommendation that I'm going to make in the report regardless.
But when you impose that restriction on individual homeowners, it's kind of tough to monitor and...
It is. The way I look at it, though, if I may, you know, we have the APod, right? And so we're, we do monitor it, right? We impose the clearing restriction, we do it. This is not an APod, so it does become hard. That being said, I'm looking at cumulative impacts on East Quag right now. And so what I'm seeing is we've got developable properties. We keep saying there's not a lot out there. Well, there's enough out there. And so the goal, I think, would be to try to, with groundwater impacts and everything, and this will all come out of the SECRE review. This is going to be subject to SECRE, would be to try to keep up as much of the vegetation as possible. I don't think we have to be, you don't have to tell them, you know, you're going to get 10% clearing, but we could come up with something based on the live size of the property. You know, my guess is they would all be allowed 50, 60% if it was APod, based on the size of the properties.
Anthony, we did this at Shinnecock Hills. It's not an APod, but we imposed the clearing restrictions as if it were APod.
Yep.
And this clearing, this is only for fertilized vegetation area, not, that excludes your house footprint, your driveway, and wherever else you are. So it's really only for...
It's hard to monitor, but, you know, to put it there.
I mean, it's not like you limit 15% of the lot, it's really...
No, 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 definitely not.
Just a fertilized vegetation area. 15%.
So, you know, unless the planning board had any numbers, my guess is, let's see what kind of subdivision design we get back at a preliminary stage before we start saying how much clearing each, because it could be based on, if we're going to use APod as a standard, then it should be maybe just based on the size of the property, the way APod operates. We don't know what that is yet, so... But I would leave it open for clearing restrictions, in my opinion.
Okay, makes sense.
So that was number five, too. Six, the DEC didn't provide comments, but the Conservation Board, this is within that long-eared bat habitat, so they may have clearing limitations, seasonal clearing limitations. Number seven, as always, Old Country Road is busy. So depending on how the subdivision design is, I'd like to put in a general statement, try to maximize common driveways to the maximum extent possible, limits curb cups, limits clearing. Eight, the installation of the onsite water treatment for all new home construction now, and that should be noted on the map. I do put in here the Health Department, just so you know, the Health Department density standards for this area. This is Groundwater Management Zone 4, which is 20,000 square feet. So we're, our zoning is consistent with the Health Department's density requirements, except that I do note in here that the affordable component may, may an issue for the Health Department. The Health Department, unlike, is just ignoring the affordable housing requirement. They're not doing density incentive, so it could require some sanitary flow credit to get to that point.
And that the town would provide?
We could, yeah, absolutely. I mean, if it's something like this, I think this would be a good example where we would.
I think, yeah, I think we've done that.
For sure, for sure. So that's good. Again, I've been doing this as a standard. It's not, actually, this is not CPF priority properties. Jackie Fennell did reach out to me, though. But I will put it in the standard comment. We can't require that anybody preserve their property in its entirety, but go talk to the CPF. Town's got some money out there, so why not direct them? Like I said, it worked with Camp Jerome. I don't believe there's any lots coming out of that subdivision now, so... Let's see here. This is an unlisted action, as I said, so they should do a long environmental assessment form. We didn't get any comments from the town engineer on this one, unfortunately. I'm less concerned about it only because we don't get engineer drawings at a pre-app. That happens in a major subdivision during preliminary. So any comments that we get will become part of the record. They will be forwarded to the applicant. And then, of course, when we get to the preliminary, we'll resend. Any open space, we have to be indicated if it was being dedicated, which is preferred. Number 14 is not correct because this is not a, we're not ready to help departments, so ignore that one. But I think, I think what I tried to do here was just give the applicants a general direction on how to design the subdivision based on some macro, you know, universal, you know, is how I...
Did they pay enough for all your suggestions?
We'll see. They've been very, you know, it's rare that an applicant comes to me with 50 maps and says, "Just tell us what you want," so... So, you know, with those little minor changes, or just clarifying those, I think we could adopt this report. Does the board have other questions? Of course.
Suffolk County Water Authority has enough water that they're pumping along these...
Well, like all applications that go to the Health Department, even though this is done on the applicant, the Health Department requires a letter of water availability from the Water Authority. So the applicant will have to provide that to the Water Authority. And then that's what starts the discussion about water main sizes and/or expansion of need. They might visit this water here, but, but yes, there will be, that has to come out.
I'm talking about overall impact.
Well, yeah, no question. And that's, that's why I'm sort of taking this position.
Yes, I think it's great.
So with that, I think with that report, for adoption.
I'll make a motion.
And is two the same?
I'm going to do the second one separate, but yeah, it's the same thing.
Okay, so...
But he's not going to say much.
Motion by Kate.
Second.
Second by George. All in favor?
Aye.
Those extensions? Six in favor, one absent.
So the only big difference between Coastal Vision 1 and 2 is the size of the property and the number of the lots. So what I will say in this case is...
This is the larger of the two.
This is the larger of the two. So the question was really between 11 and 10 lots, perhaps. So in this case, I think they probably have a yield of 10 lots, which would then give them an 11th lot for affordable. So you're looking at maybe seven and 11.
They don't get two?
What's that?
They don't get two additional lots?
If the yield is 10, they only get a 10% increase in the yield, so they get an extra lot.
If it's 11, then you get, they get two?
No, we don't round up.
I don't think they, you don't round up. It's always interesting where and when. I don't believe you do, actually, so... So aside from that, and the other with this one is, and I don't think it's really an issue. This one, again, the road abandonment, but they show here Central Avenue or Central Boulevard, depending on which map you look at. It actually doesn't show up on our GIS at all. It's really strange. However, that being said, there's clearly access coming through Central Avenue. So what I said in this particular report was, and again, we'll do a research we have on our end with maps, that the applicant will need to show that they, A, that this road exists, that they have rights to it, because that could affect the yield on the property as well. And we just don't have that information. So I put that...
Is that going over the railroad tracks?
Yeah, well, this, yeah, it's sort of, it's skewed. Yeah, but you can see here, it, we don't even show the road here. So it's somewhat skewed, but there is something that's coming over the railroad tracks here, which is not probably ideal, but I know we had that discussion on some other...
Is that, that could just be like a thing that dirt bikes and so on use right now for riding?
Yeah. So I did, I left that as a question there, which is, which is good, but the recommendations are all the same. It's basically, take the two properties, let's figure out yield using methods that I said, and then let's cluster to one side and preserve the other side. That's basically what this report says.
So Anthony, a question on affordable housing.
Sure.
The affordable housing legislation that was passed by this town some years ago was patterned on the New York State Affordable Housing Legislation.
It was mandated by the state. You have to go and do this stuff, yeah, basically.
Yes, but, I mean, the town didn't change anything from the state. They could have, but they didn't. I remember this board, they viewed it.
The only thing they did change is they do have something... There was something that was changed. The way that the regulation was written was the decrease in density. What happened was people would take a yield of, let's say, 20 lots, reduce it by 19, reduce it by 1 to 19, and say, "Look, I'm out of..." And that was, as Jeff Murphy said, a giant loophole that you could drive a Mack truck through.
Huge.
So we, that's what he said. And so the town eliminated that. The only way to get out of the affordable housing requirement is that you have to go below the threshold, which is less than five lots. So if you do four-lot subdivision, you're not subject to it then. And if you decrease it, you got to decrease it to four, if you want to get out of it.
So it's been amended?
Yeah. Yeah.
The legislation has been amended?
To our, yeah.
Okay. Yep.
But I would recommend adopting this one as well.
I know this isn't a planning thing, but is that affordable in perpetuity?
Oh, that is a planning issue, because it's that issue. Go to South Hold, you could go to Matatuck, and the affordable housing that they did in 1990 was never perpetual. All those people got the benefit of affordable housing and the benefit of the equity that went with it.
Big equity, yeah, that's why.
So these would be perpetual.
Motion to approve.
Motion.
Motion by Gloria and second by Craig. All in favor? Opposed extensions. Six in favor, one absent.
Number 13. Bartlett Tree X, we did the pre-submission on this one. You can see here, I have the aerial up here.
It's a funny little place, right?
What's that?
It's that funny little.
Yeah, it's that funny piece right on north of the road there. And so they submitted they're doing the, the two little trailers up on the, just north of the parking lot. The application's incomplete, though. They needed a bunch of engineering stuff, and I want the clearing on here, because they got good buffers. So let's see what the buffers are, but it's incomplete.
Okay.
16, which is Donato.
What about 12?
Oh.
We need a motion.
Yeah, a motion, I'm sorry. Motion to deem Bartlett in complete.
Second.
Motion by, who was, who made the motion?
I thought.
Craig. Motion by Craig, second by Gloria, and all in favor. Opposed extensions. Six in favor, one absent.
11 and 12 are off the agenda.
What about eight?
11 and 12 are off.
Also off the agenda. So my next one, that would be 16, Donato.
Seven, eight, eight is off.
And then number.
So your next one is what?
16?
Forty, Donato. Page 40, Donato.
Number 16.
It's just to do an extension and a waiver of the pre-application policy. This is a two-lot subdivision, Bay Avenue West, as you can see here. It'll be one lot in the front with the existing, a flag lot in the back. They got really caught up in the Health Department during the pandemic and everything. So it's a little retro, so they're just looking for the extension of the pre-app. It would bring it to May 23, 2023, and then after that, they would have to start over.
So May 23, 2023.
Yes, May.
Motion.
Motion by Kate, second by Gloria, and all in favor. Opposed extensions. Six in favor, one absent.
And then you did my other ones, I think.
And I think you're done, Anthony?
That's it.
Looks like you are done. And are you on tonight?
Yeah, we just have the one, that'll be quick.
It will be, right?
Yeah.
From your mouth.
To someone's ears.
Yes.
So Anthony, the NRP, is Janice going to give us that revision, or what?
I wasn't here when you had it.
I think she already adopted it. She's going to give you the, just send you the reformatted one.
She'll send it to us.
Yeah.
But we adopted.
You adopted it.
We adopted it.
Because it was.
She's just going to reorganize the language.
Can you, motion closed in meeting, Carrie's got to get to the.
Yes, motion, motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion by George, second by Gloria, all in favor. Opposed extensions. Six in favor, one absent. We are adjourned.